All right, we are on the air. I call the 2,407th Meeting of the Milwaukee City Council to order. This meeting is being held in person at City Hall and by video conference. The public may participate in this meeting by coming to City Hall or joining the Zoom webinar. The meeting is being broadcast live on the city's YouTube channel and Comcast Cable Channel 30 in City Limits. There will be opportunities for the public to speak during this meeting. If you would like to address council, you may come to City Hall or participate via Zoom. If you are interested in speaking, please let staff know by filling out a yellow comment card that are there on that table for those at City Hall or emailing OCR@MilwaukeeOregon.gov for those on Zoom. When it is time to take public comments, staff will monitor the comment cards, email inbox, and Zoom participant list and chat. We will take comments in the order they are received and seen. Comments may be emailed to OCR@MilwaukeeOregon.gov. We ask that all Zoom participants who intend to speak label their Zoom username to show their first and last names for the record. Spanish translation services are available upon request. The public is asked to request translation and other meeting accessibility services at least 48 hours before the meeting. For more information, contact the City Recorder at 503-786-7502. "Servicios de traducción en español están disponibles cuando se haya solicitado. Se pide al público que solicite servicios de traducción y otros servicios de accesibilidad por lo menos 48 horas antes de la reunión." Para obtener más información, llama al secretario de la ciudad a 503-786-7502. Translation services are also available in other languages. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The city of Milwaukee respectfully acknowledges that our community is located on the ancestral homeland of the Clackamas people. In 1855, the surviving members of the Clackamas signed the Willamette Valley Treaty, also known as the Kalapuyia, etc. Treaty, with the federal government in good faith. We offer our respect and gratitude to the indigenous people of this land. And then we have our announcements for this week. So Concerts in the Park, sponsored by two of the city's neighborhood district associations, return in August. Is the slide coming up? Okay. The Llewellyn NDA will hold concerts on each Wednesday at 6:30 PM at Ball Michelle Park. Bring a blanket or lawn chair to enjoy the festivities. Hearth &amp; Soul Pizza with Bella the Pizza Bus will be back again this year, serving up some delicious food for purchase. The Ardenwald Johnson Creek NDA will hold concerts on the first four Thursdays at 6:30 PM at Ardenwald Park. Vendors will include Milwaukee Cafe &amp; Bottle Shop, Luna's Ice Cream, and Made in Milwaukee. And I was there for opening night last Thursday, and it was kind of warm, but it was a really fun night, a lot of people dancing and kids running around like crazy. Milwaukee Letting Library's Fun in the Park Series continues on Thursday, August 8th at 10:30 AM with the Oregon Coast Aquarium's Tide Pool Animals Program. The event takes place at Ardenwald Park. After the morning program, kids ages zero to 18 are welcome to a free lunch at Ardenwald Elementary School. Bring a lawn chair or blanket for seating. Parking is available at Ardenwald Elementary. The community is invited to meet the four candidates being considered by City Council to become Milwaukee's next city manager. The meet and greet will take place in City Hall in this building on the first floor next Monday between 5:00 and 6:30 PM. The annual Johnson Creek Cleanup returns on Monday, August...on Monday, no, on Saturday, August 17th. This is your chance to get into the creek and get out the trash that accumulated over the past year. Don't miss this unique opportunity to remove litter from where it matters most. Volunteers have removed over 70 tons of trash since 2007. All volunteers are treated to a free lunch. This year also includes an art contest to design the event t-shirts. Learn more and register to participate on Johnson Creek Watershed Council's website, which is jcwc.org. For more information about each of these events and others, please visit the city's homepage at MilwaukeeOregon.gov or call 503-786-7555, or ask Jason Wax, who's sitting back there in the back of the room. And then I have a haiku. So this is something I started doing several months ago. I'm always looking for people to contribute haiku. So this one, in recognition that we're in concert season, was submitted by Steve Smith, who lives in Ardenwald and is active with that neighborhood association and on the theme of the summer concerts. So, "Withering Summer." But wait, drums in the distance, the concert's cometh. So if you'd like to submit a haiku for reading at a future meeting, it just has to be G-rated. It can be about Milwaukee events or not. It can be about back to school, or whatever topics might be on your mind, but send them to me at that email address there.
Mayor, may I add an announcement?
Sure.
The Friends of the Letting Library are having their big quarterly sale, book sale, this weekend, so at the library in the community room on Saturday and Sunday. It begins at 10:00 AM.
Yeah, I think I read on Sunday it's $15 a bag full, or something, you know.
Bottom of Saturday, that's when they're full price.
Okay. With that, any other announcements anyone has? With that, I will invite up Celebrate Milwaukee Inc. board members Mark Steen and Tim Taylor and a third, I think three of them, to talk to us about National Farmers Market Week. Yep. And hit the little button on the mics so the red light comes on.
That's okay. Good evening, Mayor Beatty and City Council. My name is Tim Taylor. This is Frank Weintraub. We are both residents of Milwaukee and also on the Board of Celebrate Milwaukee Incorporated, or CMI, which is the parent organization of the Milwaukee Farmers Market. We're delighted to be here tonight to hear your proclamation in support of Farmers, National Farmers Market Week. Farmers markets are increasingly, are an increasingly important part of our food network in this country, and we're very fortunate here in Milwaukee to have our own market, which is going strong in its 26th season, and one of the best in the region, I would say. It's important, and especially over these last few years, to have access to fresh, healthy food, as well as the opportunities to support local farmers, producers, and other small businesses. In addition, the market offers, also offers food support programs such as SNAP, WIC, and Double Up Food Bucks. We are fortunate to be able to provide this, all of this at the market, with the support of our many partners. CMI deeply appreciates the support we receive from the city, which has helped the market grow into one of our community's strongest and best-loved institutions. The city is a wonderful partner, and we're really grateful for that. Thank you for your support today of National Farmers Market Week, and thank you for your support year-round of the Milwaukee Farmers Market.
Since I've been on the Board, I've really enjoyed the market, and I think we bring a lot to the community, and I think it's a wonderful community event. People bring their kids, they bring their families, and it's, the protest is good, the music is good, the prepared foods are good, so if you want to visit us, we'd be happy to have you.
I will say that in Milwaukee, there are two seasons, market season and not-market season, and everybody during not-market season is waiting for the market to come back. And I was on the CMI Board for a while, and one of the things we did while I was there was sort of a little info booth dot exercise, where we had people put where they came from in the metro, you know, we had a map of the metro area, and people come from a long way to go to the market. I, I have other mayors who tell me they come to our market, and in fact, the mayor of, you know, I figured, like, metro area, yeah, they stop by our market, but the mayor of Cascade Locks comes to our market because her mother is in a, in a senior living facility in Clackamas County, so she comes in and times her visits to her mother to go to the Farmers Market because she, she likes it so much. So we know we have Jewel in the Milwaukee Farmers Market. And Nicole, if you could please put up, I don't have my screen open, so hoping you can put the proclamation up on the big screen so I can read it from there. Thank you. Perfect. "Whereas, Farmers Markets are an integral part of Oregon's food system and agricultural economy and are important sales outlets for farmers and food business owners, generating revenue that supports the sustainability of family farms and the revitalization of rural communities. And whereas, Farmers Markets provide residents of all income levels with access to healthful, locally-produced foods through the Milwaukee Farmers Market and over 70 other Oregon markets that accept Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, or SNAP, benefits and other critical food access programs. Whereas, the Milwaukee Farmers Market is celebrating 26 years as a cornerstone of our community, well-loved by customers and vendors who come from Milwaukee and far beyond. Now therefore, I, Lisa Beatty, Mayor of the City of Milwaukee, a municipal corporation in the county of Clackamas in the state of Oregon, with the consent of the City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of August 4th through 10th, 2024, as Farmers Market Week, and do call upon all Milwaukians to celebrate and support the Milwaukee Farmers Market and other area Farmers Markets." Thank you, guys, for coming, and thanks for all you do, bringing us this much-beloved market.
Thank you, Mayor, and the City Council, for your time and support.
Okay. And now we have a couple of special reports for which we have visitors from the county, and the first one is the Clackamas County Stabilization Center. I think Adam Brown, Mary Rumbaugh, and Malcolm McDonald are going to talk to us about this. And our police chief, Ryan Burdick, is he going to join them? Chief Burdick is going to join them as well. So, yep, push the button and get a red light when you want to talk, and you probably can't all have them pushed at once, and we have sort of a limit, but...
All right, well, Mayor, councilors, thank you so much for the opportunity to be here tonight. I am Adam Brown, Deputy Director of Clackamas County's Health, Housing, and Human Services Department. I use he/him pronouns.
Mary Rumbaugh, she/her pronouns, and I am the Clackamas County Behavioral Health Division
Good evening. I'm Malcolm McDonald, who serves as the Captain in the Sheriff's Office. I oversee our Adult Pro and Probation Division and our Community Corrections Programs.
And Ryan Burdick, Chief of Police for Milwaukee.
All right, well, thanks again for the opportunity to be here tonight. We've been partnering with many of you for, for many months now on the development of the Clackamas County Stabilization Center. We appreciate your support. We're excited to talk with you a little bit about the program design, our plans for site management at the site. We'll leave plenty of time for questions and dialogue at the end. We have just some brief prepared remarks to give kind of a high-level overview of those elements in our project timeline, and then we'll go from there. So, as you know, the stabilization center is being built to meet community need for rapid behavioral health assessment and crisis stabilization. Currently, Clackamas County community members experiencing a behavioral health crisis do not have enough support resources to get back on their feet. Behavioral health includes mental health and well-being, and related behavior may include addiction and substance use. Often, these community members draw the attention of law enforcement and are taken to jail or the emergency room, but emergency departments and jails are simply not equipped to provide the type of support that they need. This project is a partnership between Clackamas County's Health, Housing, and Human Services Department and the Sheriff's Office using the former Women's Center building at 9200 McBride here in Milwaukee. And I was talking with Malcolm earlier, he told me that the county has been delivering services there since 1980. I'll let you decide whether that was before or after I was born. This is one part of Clackamas County's efforts to increase access points for services within our recovery-oriented system of care, but we know that no one community should have to shoulder the burden of our shared responsibilities on behavioral health needs and public safety. So other access points we're working on include the Recovery Center in Clackamas, which is addictions-focused, you'll hear more about that in your next session, the Resource Center in Oregon City, which is housing services-focused, the Transitional Housing Village in Clackamas, which is also housing services-focused, recovery-oriented scattered site homes, which you heard about a couple of months ago when Devin Ellen and I were here, giving you an overview on a repositioning and the development of Hillside Park, and access centers in Estacada and Malala, which are housing services-focused.
Can you clarify where that transitional housing is? I wasn't familiar with that. I know there's some plan for the Recovery Center, but you mean something different than that.
Yeah, the county is expanding on the current site where the Veterans Village is located, just outside of Happy Valley. Many of you maybe have been to that site. So actually, we broke ground there last month, they've, they've cleared that site, and they're making way for 26 pods, and so it'll be an expansion on that site.
Thank you.
Funding for the stabilization center project includes $4 million allocated by the Oregon Legislature in the last short session, and that funding for our one-time capital improvements, the ongoing funding is going to be provided by Health Share of Oregon and the Supportive Housing Services Measure. The site will include two complementary programs in the north and south halves of the building, and it will serve adults, primarily referred by law enforcement, health providers, and mobile crisis responders. It will be a comfortable and safe place for community members who need short-term support, coping skills, and connections to resources to manage a crisis. The building's north half will operate a 24/7 schedule to provide short-term drop-in behavioral health crisis stabilization services. The building's south half will provide short- and medium-term housing stabilization to people experiencing homelessness through referrals from the county's Coordinated Housing Access System. The two programs will be complementary, ensuring close coordination and collaboration between our behavioral health and housing systems. The site will be operated by one or more community-based organizations experienced in delivering this kind of service. I'm going to let Mary say more here about the Behavioral Health Stabilization Program, and then I'll talk about the housing stabilization.
Thank you. So the, the crisis stabilization model is actually based on some really best practices. There are a couple of programs across the state, including Deschutes County, the state is actually in process of creating rules around what they call the 23-hour crisis stabilization. It's a 24/7-run program, but the individual can, can be there up to 23 continuous hours, and the intent is really a trauma-informed, safe environment, some brief assessment, really assess what the individual needs, and ideally get them then connected to services in the community in which they were brought from. So we expect that this to be a law enforcement, a mobile response team, including your own behavioral health individual who's part of your police department, as well as discharge from healthcare facilities, including emergency rooms. And Adam will talk a little bit more then about the other complementary side, so if somebody actually needs stabilization longer than 23 hours, the intent would be that they would get longer, longer-term, short-term, but longer-term support. And, and again, our commitment is to ensure that the, that wherever the individual has come from in this community, in Clackamas County, specifically Clackamas County, that they will return to that home community with supports.
So similarly, the housing stabilization program will operate 24 hours a day, seven days a week, with onsite staffing. It'll provide semi-congregate safety off the streets for up to 12 adults at a time referred through the Coordinated Housing Access Program. The average length of stay is anticipated to be between 30 and 60 days. Supportive services provided to participants will be recovery-oriented, based on individual needs, and include things like development of an individualized recovery-oriented service plan that identifies barriers to, to overcome and goals to achieving stable housing, access to case management, peer support, housing navigation and placement services, behavioral health and physical health supports, access to resources to provide next steps to permanent housing, support services networks for mental health treatment, substance use treatment, counseling, financial education, workforce, rent well, and other workshops and resources to increase self-sufficiency, community meetings and events, conflict resolution and mediation, and again, 24/7 onsite staffing. So that's the kind of program design, but of course, management of the physical site has important elements, too. So I'm going to go over property management, safety and security elements, and then our intent to be responsive to the needs of the surrounding community. We, we're going to have our service provider do the site management and program delivery, but in partnership with the county. So the site management includes property management, safety and security, and responsiveness to the community, like I mentioned. Property management includes maintenance, repairs, materials and supplies, landscaping, housekeeping, cleaning. It will also include maintaining a site manual for program participants that outlines things like program purpose, services offered, governance, participation guidelines, room inspections, policies, and values. On safety and security, we're going to work with the service providers to ensure that safety and security, both for program participants and the surrounding community, are a top priority. The site will contain security cameras and will be well-lit, onsite staffing, 24/7, carrying out perimeter walks. carrying out perimeter walks for cleaning and security. Drug and alcohol use will not be allowed onsite. Weapons will not be allowed onsite. Camping outside of the property won't be allowed. And people accessing services on the housing stabilization side must access them through the Coordinated Housing Access System. So, walk-up housing stabilization services will not be offered. With regard to the surrounding community, this is a top priority for the county. We've been engaged with all of you, like I said, for many, many months. You've expressed interest in a good neighbor agreement. We're, the county's fully committed to that. We'll get further into the development of that good neighbor agreement once we have our service providers onboard, because they'll play a really important role. But we recognize that the success of this program is contingent upon our responsiveness to community concerns, collaborative problem-solving, and engaging with the community to meet shared goals. This includes all of you here at the City of Milwaukee and our law enforcement partners in Milwaukee, our health system partners in Milwaukee. We'll continue to work with the stakeholders in the surrounding community as we work towards site opening to initiate and maintain transparent and ongoing communication, develop clear expectations and procedures for resolving problems, enhancing neighborhood safety and livability while promoting access to services, and fostering positive relationships with the surrounding neighbors. So, that's our program overview, site management overview. I'm gonna talk a little bit about the timeline, and then we'll open it up to any questions that you have. On our project timeline, our solicitation for a contractor to do the remodel of the facility is out now, and that'll close here in a couple of weeks. We expect to have that contractor identified and a contract executed with them by the end of September. We're gonna carry out separate solicitations for our program delivery, with separate solicitations for the behavioral health side and the housing side. We may get one service provider that applies to both of those solicitations, which would be great. We'd love to have one provider, but it may also be different providers that we expect will work together on the complementary programs. Those solicitations are gonna be released this month, and we'll have those providers selected sometime in September, contracts negotiated in October and November. From there, and this is somewhat contingent upon the availability of our contractor to get started, but we expect construction to start sometime in October or November. And then we anticipate it'll take between nine and 12 months, which will have us opening that site sometime right around next year at this time. And I know you, we sent you all the packet that we provided our Board of County Commissioners last week. Last week, we gave similar presentation to our board that was intentional to engage with you and the board around the same time on this, as we kind of get started on the construction phase. So, last week, the board approved of this preliminary site management and program delivery plan. They had approved of our funding plan a number of months ago. So, we're pretty much all set to go ahead and get construction underway, get the programming built, and get ready to deliver services.
All right. Questions? Counselor Anderson, you wanna start us off?
I don't even have to raise my goose. You mentioned that operating funding is coming in the future from HealthShare and another partner. How does it work to partner with a CCO like that? And I guess I'm curious, when you assume your payer base here, a lot of the people in the behavioral health system are implicitly gonna be Medicaid. Like, what percent are Medicaid versus commercial that you're looking at there?
Well, what I can share is that our county-based mobile crisis response team serves about 60% Medicaid, either HealthShare or Trillium. The operating budget that Care Oregon has provided us, which will be ongoing, is really their contribution to the community. So, it's their community investment, and they've made similar contributions to Washington and Multnomah County. And so, they had actually approached us and said, how close would you be to do something like a stabilization center? And that created this opportunity. So, it's really their community investment. We won't be billing for those services. Right now, there's actually no Medicaid billable code for these services. There may be in the future, which would be wonderful. But we know that a large percentage of people we serve are houseless, uninsured, they're on commercial insurance. Commercial insurance folks also struggle with mental health conditions, right? And they need something like this center.
The no Medicaid match for the stabilization, is that because it exceeds 16 beds, or is that a separate?
No, there's just never been a code for it. It's still very new. And so, that's, in fact, the rule right now is in draft. And so, I think once the rules are in place, then Oregon Health Authority will look at whether there will be a corresponding billable code or not. It's hard, right? 23 hours, somebody might be there. You know, Deschutes County, their average is six to eight hours that somebody's there. So, and really, you know, models like this have to be paid to capacity. You have to staff it at the same level, whether you have two individuals in your recliner or full, all eight filled. And so, that's the recognition from our coordinated care organizations, is you just have to do some of that capacity-based payment, and that's the model that they're giving us.
Does Pacific Source pair with Deschutes County, or how are they funding their?
They're an interesting mix. They use County General Fund, some of their CCO, some contributions from their law enforcement partners. So, they're a very interesting mix. It's a beautiful location. If you ever get over to Bend, they'd be happy to tour the facility. And our facility will look very similar to theirs.
All right, great, thank you.
And I'll just add there that, you know, our health system partners really have been eager to hear from us about the barriers of conventional billing schemes and trying to bring forward more flexible funding to deliver lower-barrier services, recognizing that those conventional schemes are barriers to access. So, we've, I would say, they're very receptive to these conversations. We're having similar conversations around our recovery campus that you'll hear more about, also our Resource Center in Oregon City, which we're gonna put FQHC, our health center's FQHC, is gonna deliver low-barrier services there. And our health system partners have been eager to talk about those billing schemes for FQHC and how they don't fully fund that kind of service, and looking for creative ways to meet those shared goals.
All right, super full. If you allow me one more. So, when you're talking about how there's no Medicaid code, is this something that you'd seek a waiver from CMS for? Is this something that you'd separately? Like, what is the process?
The Oregon Health Authority may do that. They have some flexibility to sort of determine allowable codes on the Oregon Health Plan and a lot. They've been, as they have adopted, as Oregon Health Authority has adopted the Crisis Now model, as they have adopted and implemented 988, crisis stabilizations have been actually part of the structure and with the goal of obtaining, you know, funding whether through federal Medicaid, whether through State General Fund. So, I think those conversations are ongoing. Again, we are so lucky that HealthShare saw a need, and they said, we're gonna fund full operations pretty much in perpetuity, as long as the CCO is staying in business, which they're quite large, they should do just fine.
Well, we'll see in renegotiation.
That's true.
Yeah, okay, well, I appreciate it. Thanks for all the work.
Council President Massey.
Yeah, I look forward to this facility being open and providing these needed services. My question is about service providers, and I would just like to hear your sense of the market. Are there a lot of providers? Are there few providers? Are they local? Are they national? What's your sense of the market there?
Well, I think we'll see. My assumption will be that they will be known providers that already have a footprint, if not in Clackamas County, then here in the tri-county. I think any provider who applies to the solicitation is gonna be challenged with their own workforce. Behavioral health has not been exempt from the challenges with retaining its workforce over the last four years. The staffing model, at least on the 23-hour crisis stabilization, is not extensive. It would be possible, it's about four to five individuals for each shift. There's, you know, a licensed medical doctor on call. It really should not be beyond what a local provider would be able to do. But I don't see an out-of-state provider. I think it will be a known provider to us who will be applying.
Counselor Coach Reba?
Yeah, thank you, everyone. I really appreciate this, and I'm really looking forward to the stabilization center going in. My day job is in mental health, in veteran mental health specifically, as a veteran myself. So, my question is, and I guess this would probably be more for the provider, but I'm sure there's been discussions on this, like, is there gonna be staff available to deal with specific members from different communities, like the veteran community, the LGBTQ+ community, communities of color? Like, are they gonna have staff available to address their needs? Even, and again, female counselors, you know, we deal with a lot of military sexual trauma and things like that. So, is there gonna be? I'm assuming that there will be, but I'd like to know if that's the plan when looking at a provider as well.
Absolutely. And the 23-hour side is actually very, will be very heavily staffed with peers, so individuals with lived experience. We are gonna be looking for individuals who have had trauma in their life, they've been hospitalized, they've gone to jail, maybe even prison, and have come out the other side. Because we also know that individuals, this is not a deep assessment that's gonna be happening. We need to connect on a very personal, human-to-human level. And so, absolutely, all of the population that you're talking about, we actually have good data from our county mobile crisis team, because that's data we collect for the state. So, we're gonna have a better sense, because right now, those are the folks that Glenn out of Milwaukee PD, my team, these are the folks we're actually stabilizing, for the most part, in the community, but they need a little bit more. And so, we have some good data on really the population that we're serving. So, we're gonna design the staffing to meet that population need. So, we're already a little bit ahead of the game of knowing really the community, because we're already responding to them today.
Okay, that's great to hear, because I know just dealing with VA, it can be hard to connect with that, and having someone on staff that knows how to navigate that system would be critical. My other question is criteria. So, at where I work, you know, there's intake criteria, whether somebody is able to come in or not. I'm sure there's gonna be the same thing with the provider that's gonna work there. So, with that being said, if somebody needs crisis stabilization but doesn't meet criteria for the 23-hour stabilization center, is there a place to take them after that? Is there a backup plan? Is there contingencies being put in place?
Well, certainly, our intention would be that no one would be turned away. We do not want to be a wrong door. You know, I think the balance in particular will be folks who are under the influence. But even today, at our Urgent Mental Health Walk-in Center over on 82nd, it is voluntary service, and so people need to agree, especially if it's law enforcement or a mobile team engaging. This is an option for them. The person needs to agree. And they have to, pretty much, and if you go to Deschutes County, they'll say the same thing. They pretty much need to be able to walk, talk, and eat a sandwich. That's all we, that's all we need. And it is okay if they just say, I need eight hours of peace. I don't really want to be bothered. I'm gonna be in my recliner. We'll be monitoring them. That's okay, too. So, we, our goal, and we're not gonna get it right all the time. And so, it could be that somebody is maybe going through withdrawal, they're gonna need medical intervention. We're gonna get them to the hospital.
Okay. Can I add just one thing there? I think the important part there is system coordination. We've been talking with Providence, Milwaukee, right? Their CEO has been to our county campus a number of times to talk about, there are folks that find themselves in the hospital, that's not the best place for them. We want them to come to the stabilization center, and then we can connect them to other options, vice versa, right? They may come to the stabilization center. We may feel like the hospital's the best place for them. So, it's really about those partnerships that we have. I think more and more, across all of our system in Clackamas County, behavioral health, healthcare, homeless services system, we're working on that fabric every day, because that's the important part, of making sure people get the care that they need.
Absolutely, yeah. Just from working in this, Clackamas County does a lot of good things. I have pretty good relationships with a lot of people within the county system. So, you guys do an awesome work. I'm assuming that that criteria piece is gonna be similar with the housing part, right? For that stabilization piece, okay. But my last question is, once the, because this is something overall that we see an issue with, right? Is the, there's a gap from when the person, when an individual leaves the facility, right? And it's kind of like the handoff, right? The warm handoff, whatever, however you want to describe it. There can be a time where there's a drop-off, people slip through the cracks, things like that happen. What do you see as the key to prevent that from happening when they leave that stabilization center to go into that next step of transitioning?
I think the role of peers become really critical. Peers can be very flexible, so that ability to do some follow-up becomes really critical, including the ability to get that individual, when their time is up at the stabilization, back to their community, so that we are literally, you know, getting in a car with them and transporting them. So, that connection piece will be really critical. And I think we've been pretty honest, you know? Somebody who comes into the stabilization center houseless is probably gonna discharge houseless, with the exception that they're not gonna be connected. But that's what they are wanting and what they're willing to do. And if they're not quite ready, we're still gonna, we're gonna still figure out how to follow up with them and stay connected to them.
I really appreciate it. Those are my questions.
Yeah, I just want to add that, that's such an important piece of this, because you could have a crisis stabilization center that's not connected to a housing system, right? And that many communities do. That's not what we're doing here. So, everyone that is dealing with housing insecurity, that finds themselves on the behavioral health stabilization side, if they want, they'll get a coordinated housing access assessment. And then we're connected to them. They're connected to our system. We can put them on a pathway to permanent housing, supportive housing, if that's what they need. So, I think that connection between the behavioral health system, Mary's right, they may go back to the streets, if that's what they want. We'll do our best to provide them a longer place to stay, a shelter. But ultimately, the most important part is that connection to our housing system.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. I'm really excited to see this, because it's a huge need, you know, I don't need to beat a dead horse, but, you know, I work at a 24/7 emergency psychiatric hospital, and it's really similar. And that's kind of where the drop-off we've noticed is the warm handoff or sometimes the cold handoff, that just, sometimes they slip through the cracks. And having that connectivity, which we don't, makes a huge difference and goes such a long way in ensuring that people don't return to the street. So, I really do appreciate what you guys are doing. And shout out to the two council members up here, Councilor Stavon Jordan, Councilor President Robert Massey, who have been doing a tremendous job in being our liaison, so thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Stavon Jordan.
Hi. Thank you for being here, and thanks for all of your work to make this happen in our city. I think I can speak for all of us that we're really excited to have this opportunity to provide some support and care for community members all across the county. I have a couple of questions. One centers in around, you have the federally qualified health center that is planned to go in at Carrying Place in Oregon City in partnership. And I know it's not an easy lift to scale up another health center. So, has there been any conversation about having some health services onsite at the stabilization center that are along those lines? And is there any appetite for maybe a partner health center that's not run by the county?
That's a good question. We haven't contemplated FQHC-related physical or behavioral health services there onsite. But I think part of that is a function of the capacity of things that you can deliver. So, we want to make the connections, like I said. So, we have our health center on Lake Road, right? It's gonna be, it's not fully operational now. There's some services being delivered there. We're working on the remodel of that site. And then the Carrying Place in Oregon City, and then our primary clinics on Sunnyside, and then up on the Red Sox campus in Oregon City. So, I feel like out of the gate, we can at least make connections to those sites, but we haven't, we haven't thought about delivering those kind of services at McBride.
Okay. If there was a third party that was interested, would you be open to entertaining some of those conversations?
Yeah, we're always open to those partnerships.
Okay. And then kind of along those lines, you know, I had the opportunity to tour a stabilization center in Washington DC this year, and they had the model with recliners for sort of, you know, community, you know, stabilization. And then they had some specific rooms that were for more acute situations. So, I mean, can you describe a little bit about the split of what will be available onsite and, you know, the populations that might be using those?
So, very similarly, it will be eight recliners. There will be, you know, separations of people feel like they have some privacy. But we will also have rooms where somebody who really needs to be maybe in a darker room, really no stimulus, will have that available. It'll be monitored 24/7. And again, we will be individualizing it for the person. There are gonna be individuals who just need that quiet space. There are gonna be individuals who are gonna wanna take a shower, do some laundry, get a meal, connect with their peer. So, it will be pretty flexible to really, and very individualized for the individual. But we do, it's a very, very similar model. So, somebody who needs a little bit more privacy, still with observation, will have that available to them.
Okay. Our council had an opportunity to go down to Eugene, and thank you for giving us that experience to see something that is a lot closer to home. giving us that experience to see something that is a lot closer to home, that's in operation. And I think, you know, having some space where someone can just kind of decompress and, and take a shower, and, you know, kind of take inventory of things. But it made me think about storage of belongings, and what sort of plans are in place for individuals who would be coming to the location. But it's, it's not a great situation that, you know, to have somebody have to leave everything that they own behind.
So we know we're going to have to design for that. So both, you know, simple lockers where, and this is the, the Deschutes design, where, where somebody actually, they can see the locker right in front of them. But we know we're going to have, have to have some additional storage for individuals who may be houseless, who are coming to, to the center. And this, these are all of their belongings. And so we do not want them to have to leave any of their belongings behind. So again, very much, very much a human to human experience, just to recognize that at any given time, somebody can be experiencing a significant mental health condition, crisis, and this will be a place, a very safe place that's not the hospital, that's not jail, that allows them just, your, your word was perfect, decompress.
So then what does that look like in terms of transportation? So say that someone is having an acute moment of crisis, and they are in Malala, and, and maybe it's Malala PD that interacts with them first. But if they have belongings, and it's not really trauma informed to have somebody transported in a police car, what does that look like? Does someone get called to come out in like a larger vehicle?
You know, I think some of those workflows will be pretty critical. Obviously, the cities that also have behavioral health units attached to them, you know, Cambie and Malala are now sharing a clinician. My own mobile team, we can transport, we have large vehicles, all terrain vehicles to do that as well. So that, that will be part of the provider as we identify the provider, really identifying those workflows. Because we actually do want those individuals who are in Malala, who are in Estikade and Sandy, to not have transportation be the reason they can't come here. And we need to make sure that we get them back to their community as well.
Okay, that's great.
And Councilor, one, one more thing there. So as, as part of our city-led initiatives campaign, Mary's right, now we have behavioral health folks embedded with our law enforcement partners. We funded a portion of a position for Malala that they're sharing with Cambie. We also funded a position in Sandy, so they're, they're working on that now. That's, that's a connection point between our law enforcement partners, our behavioral health system partners, our homeless services outreach teams. With the governor's emergency order funding, we've built the first ever rural area homeless services outreach in our rural communities. That's functioning really well. Our rural city partners are on board, lots of conversations happening there. So I think you can trust that well-coordinated system to help somebody in their belongings. You know, we'll help them get access to the care that they need. We'll be really sensitive to what that means for them and their belongings, and we'll figure out how to make it work.
Great. I know, I think a lot of us have been thinking a lot about deflection over the last week, with news that, at least initially, the application from Clackamas County for deflection for, for possession of controlled substances has been denied at the state level. And so I know that this specific location is not necessarily linked to the deflection, but I know it's part of a larger network. It's part of a larger system. And I'm wondering if maybe we can start some of that conversation here, and then continue into the recovery discussion. But I'm really interested in, we have these nodes of resource, physical nodes of resource that are located across the entire county. And, and we need to have a network of, you know, of communication, certainly, but probably transportation, and maybe shared policy, or some way of saying, you know, that the stabilization center is going to call the recovery campus and do a transfer of information, so that when somebody arrives, they don't have to go through the process of telling their story over again. And I know that you're in the midst of lifting a lot of things. But for those of us that are interested in advocating for the state to reconsider that decision, for the deflection funding to come in, I'm wondering if you could just speak a little bit about how that would benefit this population?
I can, I can speak to that. In my current role, but I also serve as chair of the local public safety coordinating council. And I am very optimistic that tomorrow, when the impacts grant review committee meets, we'll see a different result come out of that. And I'm also very confident, should it still be a denial, that we have a very strong appeal. And there's a lot of work by our district attorney and our board to support a positive decision for Clackamas County, to support deflection here. We do a lot of really amazing things already in Clackamas County, working with individuals suffering from addiction to homelessness to mental health. And I just want to highlight that the stabilization center is key. We don't have any other options in this county for law enforcement, for EMS. And at 2:00 in the morning, when someone is in crisis, that often results in a criminal behavior, and jail is the option, or the ER, our most expensive resources. And we know that someone that's in a mental health crisis going to jail in, is, results in them becoming worse. We know that. We see that, we see that every day. We also see that many of these individuals suffering from mental illness also have a co-occurring addiction, a disorder that needs to be addressed at the same time. And we already struggle in our community, in our state, with limited resources to, to deal with that. But in Clackamas County, we constantly look for ways to address that. So I think deflection or no deflection, we are doing things that other communities are not. We, you asked about our federally qualified health centers. Our health centers and our medical director, Dr. Chakaki, has worked actively with our jail. We have, in partnership, developed an MAT program, so everyone entering our jail has access to medication-assisted treatment, and is connected to health centers when they leave. In addition to our own sheriff's office-run treatment program, Health Centers collaborates with us, and they're, and they provide our therapists that we contract with. And we've been doing addiction treatment for those that are under community supervision for 25 years. We've been doing programs to support individuals that are in, in addiction, needing addiction, needing, addressing criminal behavior on supervision on the site, like Adam referred to, since 1980. So for 44 years. And we've been in partnership with the city of Milwaukee. I mean, during those 44 years, there's been lots of conversations, lots of time before various cities council and various mayor. So I just want to take the opportunity to thank city council for the support. But we find solutions. And I think you'll see that moving forward and to support our community. We've done that. I mean, in my own world, you know, I'm narrowly focused on those that are on parole and probation, releasing from prison to our community, finding supports, housing them. For 20 years, we've provided housing for everyone releasing from prison. So I just think there are solutions out there. But this is a critical one, because it doesn't exist today. And that results in individuals going to jail that otherwise it could have been avoided if we have a stabilization center. It's the, it's one of the first entry points where we can, my word is reroute individuals from the ER and reroute individuals from jail. We need to build upon that. The state needs to support it. The county, the board is looking for solutions, so we have those other options. And I think we all know, we have a lot more work to do to ensure, I mean, I'll say, there's people that need to be in jail, that that's the best for community safety. But today, there are people that are incarcerated that would be better suited to be in a mental health safe environment. Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
And full disclosure, I serve on the DA's advisory panel, which is the first of its kind in Oregon. And our panel has organized over the last 24 hours, we've, we've put a letter together, and it will go to the grant review committee this evening. So they have it for that 8:00 AM meeting tomorrow.
Thank you for your support.
Hopefully, we'll be able to add to, to the call. Thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
Well, thank you guys so much for the info and for answering all our questions. And thanks to my fellow counselors for asking such great questions. They kind of covered all the substantive bases, but I had a couple of more mundane questions I wanted to ask you. First off, in your document, and when you're talking about your funding pots, you talk about something as post-settlement. What does that mean?
So that's the contract that I hold with the Oregon Health Authority for a very varying lines of services. And every biennium, usually a few years after the biennium, they look at sort of how, how I spent the money, if there was some unspent money. Sometimes that's often, like with inpatient, if it was an uninsured individual, and we just, we didn't have that many, they'll, they'll decide if there's any payback. If there's no payback, then that money is released back with the intent that it's reinvested back into the behavioral health system. So we'll be using some of that. They finally just settled the 1517 biennium.
Oh, okay.
So they're a little, they're a little, they do commit to doing it sooner in the future. So hopefully, we'll have more post-settlement dollars to, to invest in this and other, some of these other projects we're talking about today.
Okay. And in the packet, there was a draft of a postcard, like to go to neighbors. I assume that's not happening yet, that that'll happen at some later, later stage?
Shortly after this meeting. I have an email in my inbox asking for a final review of that. We're waiting for this engagement with our board and with you. Now we're going to do our engagement with those neighbors.
And how wide a circle are you?
Not, not too wide, really just because of where, where that site is located, right? It's kind of insulated by a highway on, on one side, on the other side of the industrial buildings, some neighborhood around there. So it's not too big of a circle, but we'll get all the important neighbors, make contact with the golf club and things like that.
Okay, great. I have been told that the building has been known to flood. And I noticed that your plans seem to call for removal of some of the impervious surface, the sidewalks behind, and maybe some revegetation along Johnson Creek, which would be awesome. We need some more shade on Johnson Creek. But can you talk about that, the flood worries, and what your plan exactly is there?
I can speak historically, that the 9,000 McBride address was designed specifically for flooding, and is designed for water to go under the building when it was built. We had one year, which was 17, 16, I'm trying to think when we had a high water mark.
December 15th of 2015, we had a really high water mark.
Yeah. And we did evacuate the one building. It never, it never, actually, it came up to the corner, that corner of the buildings that, on the 9,000. The 9,200 has not had the same issues. Even in the flood of 96, there was actually, there was not an issue in 96. The 15 was the first time that there was an issue. And I'm not sure going farther back than that. But yeah, we were, we've been able to manage successfully. And as far as design goes with our architect, I think they took that into consideration.
Yeah, they did. They took it into consideration, the floodplain issues. And Mayor, I did get an email from the executive director of the Johnson Creek Watershed Council today. He mentioned that perhaps somebody from the city had referred him to me. I was happy to field his email. I did, I replied, and set a time to talk with him in a couple of weeks. And we're certainly open to talking with him about partnering with the county to restore kind of the ecology along the creek, if, if it works for the site design, obviously, all the environmental considerations, all of that. But I'm happy to meet with him.
Great, great. And I know Emma wants to say something. Before she does, I just want to put in a last pitch. I don't, I guess, I don't know where I saw it, but I saw that the county is doing training at some libraries on the laxone administration. I would love to have that training. I don't want to volunteer for our librarian, but I somehow feel like he would be amenable to having that at our library. And I personally would love to attend such training. So I'll just put that out there. Okay, Emma wanted to.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you so much, county staff, for being here. This has been a great update. I really appreciate it. I just had a few other, like, hopefully rapid fire, like logistical questions. And the answer might be, we're going to determine this once the provider is on board. But there are things that have come up in either community conversations or council conversations I've had. So the first is about discharge. So if, if someone is admitted to the stabilization center, maybe picked up in Malala or in Oregon City, will they be transported back to where the community, where they came from?
Yes.
Okay. And then in terms of the transportation of that, is that, do you know how that transportation will happen? Would it be the same law enforcement agency that brought them, or?
We would likely, that would be part of the project, or the provider responsibility, which is again, why we will build out capacity of peers, so that they have a little bit more flexibility to leave the site, to transport, to then come back.
Wonderful. And last question, is the center only meant to serve Clackamas County residents, or will Multnomah County or other metro area residents?
It is intended for Clackamas. We also recognize we're right on the, the border, the boundary of Multnomah. We will do our best to serve Clackamas. We obviously, and we, we actually serve folks from other counties that just come in who are in a crisis. Our goal will always to be to stabilize them the best we can and get them back to their home community.
Great. Thank you so much.
All right. Any final questions from anyone?
Just one quick, really quick. There's an application, a solicitation that's open right now for community health workers, that's for the tri-county area. And I wonder if you might be interested in partnering on an application, so that we can bring some, some more pure navigators in that are funded through someone else.
Reach out to me on that.
Okay, sounds great. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Thank you, Chief, for coming. Any, did you want to throw anything in?
I don't think so. This is a great group. We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now we have, well, I won't call them Team B from the county. I'll just say the second team from the county. We have County Administrator Gary Schmidt, and Cindy Becker, and I think potentially Commissioner, Commissioner Ben West. So talking about the recovery center plans. Okay, that's not... No, you have to hit the red light to be on.
Good evening, Mayor Beatty and councilors. Thank you for having us here today. My name is Ben West. I'm the Clackamas County Commissioner. And I want to talk to you about a project today that I'm incredibly passionate about. Actually, Clackamas County's recovery-oriented system of care is, I think, really the framework in which we're operating. And you heard a lot about it in the previous presentation. And I just wanted to have a second and explain to you guys what, what is a recovery-oriented system of care. I was going to read a definition, but I'll just wing it, since I have a handle on it. A recovery-oriented system of care is a system that allows all community members to be stakeholders in someone's recovery process in the community. And it builds out, and it makes multiple entry points within a care continuum. And the ultimate goal through this process, when we walk our community members through recovery, whether it's housing, whether it's substance abuse issue, is for them to be self-sufficient, whole, protective, sober members again, within our community, and reintegrated back into it with open arms. And so that's in a nutshell what a recovery-oriented system of care is. I would recommend anybody here going back, or anybody watching in the public. It's on our website. We passed it about a year ago, a resolution defining what it is. And it's, it is the framework, it is the ethos of what we are doing. So all this infrastructure we're building out, all of these things we're doing, all of these positive outcomes we're having, it is within the recovery-oriented system of care. And you heard our staff, and they're doing an excellent job carrying out that direction from the board. And it's been a pleasure to work with them. The recovery campus is a, is a pretty great novel idea. Mayor Beatty, I believe you were at the summit. We did a recovery summit in Clackamas County. We recognized that maybe in Oregon, we're not totally getting this issue right. And we're maybe struggling a little bit in the metro area. So we looked beyond our borders. We went all the way into Canada, we went to California, Texas, all over the United States. And we brought in thought leaders, where there are low pockets of excellence, and we had a recovery summit. And we really talked about what would be tailored, and what would specifically help deal with this issue in Clackamas. And, and what do we want to do differently? And maybe we can find some policy ideas that will help us address this crisis that we've all seen with our own eyes. And out of that came a recovery campus. And this campus is a place that, it was kind of the hub of our system. And spokes go off of that. You've heard about, maybe the stabilization's part of that, the navigation center, the health centers, all these things are part of that. And so this hub will be a multi-acreage campus that will provide somebody, wherever they're at within recovery, the ability to get the substance abuse treatment at within recovery, the ability to get the substance abuse treatment that they need. Anywhere from detox to long-term residential care, all the way into the end of the recovery where the living appeared living and they have workforce support and back into the workforce. And so our, our goal is, is to fill the gaps that have been divested in by the state of Oregon and by, or for far too long. We have big gaps in care continuums and we still are not doing the best job identifying those things and building them out in a way that's effective. And so our goal in Clackamas County is to get to work. And I'll close with this and let Cindy kind of talk a little more about the programming. But as local elected officials, we're about solving problems, real local problems. They're not Republican problems, they're not Democrat problems. They are local problems. When a, when a pothole is, is in our street and you go over in your car and your tire blows out, everyone wants that pothole filled, right? And so a pothole is a real problem, but it's also analogy of what we do at a local level. We solve problems, we fill potholes wherever that problem is. Now, this is a big one and we're trying to do the best we can to build out the system of care necessary to, to, to address it head on. And we have been unique a little bit in Clackamas. When I said our recovery oriented system of care requires local partners who are all stakeholders, government alone can't fix this, right? Churches, nonprofits, neighbors, business, local government, stakeholder, all stakeholders to help somebody do well in our community. And we took that to heart in Clackamas County. We're the only county that wanted to partner with the local sixties, all 16 of them, and give funding to them to figure out how they can even have some money and resources to deal with their neighbors in a way that's compassionate and within the recovery oriented system of care. You guys had some of those funds. You guys did great work in planning around your community members. We're the only county to partner with cities that way. And I guess I'll say this as a, as a colleague and as a county commissioner. I hope that after you hear these presentations today, I hope that your board will deliberate and it will come to a decision and say, we're going to partner with the county hand in hand in good faith to build out the recovery oriented system of care. We're coming to you specifically for the recovery campus because it's right in your backyard. It's in the UGMA of Happy Valley, but y'all are very important stakeholders right next door. And I think it's important that we communicate with you, that we partner with you, that we collaborate on something that we all care deeply about. Many of you on this board, we've had private conversations, deep conversations about really wanting to deal with this the right way. And so as a county commissioner, I would ask Mayor, maybe that you would convene a vote. Maybe you guys would discuss possibly making a resolution or a motion to support the county's recovery campus or even to support the, the stabilization center. And maybe, and other cities have done this and they've come on board and said, we're also going to adopt and support a recovery oriented system of care. That resolution's on our website. You can read it. It's the framework and the ethos that we operate out of. But just from one elected to five others, I hope you'll do that. I hope you'll show the, the citizens of Milwaukee that we can do this together, that we can put sometimes politics aside and just fill potholes together. I'd ask you to fill potholes with me tonight and learn more about the recovery campus. I hope we can earn your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Cindy Becker and I am the project coordinator for the recovery.
Hit and get the red, there you go.
I'm the project coordinator for the recovery center. I have a long history of the county. I was a former director of Health Housing and Human Services for almost seven years. And so I, I was, one of my old bosses used to say, I've been around the block a few times. I'm actually very excited about this project and I, I did the presentation a couple of different places. The mayor saw it and we had the presentation on the indicators with zip codes. And she said, wait a minute, zip codes don't tell the story. So we researched it and did get the information by census tracts. So you can, I think, relate to it. More Happy Valley had a, had a similar request. So I'm not going to go over the, the PowerPoint because I do think it's self-explanatory. Certainly if you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them. So one, I, I read this great saying the other day about people going through recovery. And is, people going through recovery are going from giving up everything for one thing and going to giving up one thing for everything. And that was a really powerful statement because that's really what we're talking about. And you'll hear the term system because the recovery center isn't going to be all things to all people. It's not intended to be, nor is the stabilization center, nor is the navigation center, nor are the existing services that are scattered across the county. And what we're trying to do is really, the system has been very reactive, not just in Clackamas County, but really across the state. And it's been reactive to where the money is. And what we're trying to do is really corral all that and say, really putting the individual at first, how do we wrap the services around the individual and their family? How do we braid the funding so that we're looking at a, not just responding to one thing. We've also been reactive in, again, it goes back to the funding. If you, how many times are you allowed to have treatment? You can have eight sessions or 10 sessions or 12 sessions and then you're going back into the community. What we want to do through this, certainly the recovery center and the recovery system of care, is make sure that as people are going through their journey, that we don't just say, good luck, but we have that tail, I call it a tail, where individuals are going back with them to their communities to help them reestablish, to make sure they're finding jobs. And so we're not just going to be waiting for them to see if they come back, but we have that investment in them, not while they're just in the confines of, of a center or a clinic when they go back to the community. So what I'd like to talk a little bit about, I always like to say what a recovery center isn't. A recovery center is not a shelter. A recovery center is not a drop-in center. And a recovery center is not a methadone clinic. A recovery center, I call it a destination, is really where people are going through their whole journey of recovery. It will include such things as detox or withdrawal management, residential treatment services, outpatient services for most substance use disorder and mental, mental health, job training, job placement, care coordination, medication assisted treatment. And a key component, I've heard it before, is that peers will be there every step of the way, from the time the person comes to the center through the time they leave and go back with their communities. The other piece of the center that is, is different, I think, than other places is we are, we are really wanting a campus because we want to have transitional housing on the site so that as the individual is preparing to go back into the community, they have a stopover place, could be up to a year, they still have the supports of the center and the same campus to help them gather the recovery capital, I think is the term of art these days, the recovery capital they need to be successful back in their communities. You'll see some recovery centers are single buildings. Washington County is building a recovery center. Theirs is in three buildings in three different locations. None of them are right, none of them are wrong. There's, so there's no one model. We are really seeking a campus model because we believe that having that ability for people to go back and forth as they need it, so there'll be detox beds, residential beds, transitional beds, you know, someone may be a little shaky and so they can go back into those services. So what's really key is that we're able to wrap around the individual and their families. I mean, this is not, we don't want to exclude the families. This is not a place, by the way, initially we were focused on adult men and women. So we're not looking at the recovery center being for families or being for young adults or children. That may happen over time, but we're really looking at phasing it in and starting with the adult, adult men and women. As Mary and Adam talked about, we, we are going to be doing what we call a NOFO. It's a notice of funding opportunity to the, to the provider community. We are planning on investing, actually coordinating funds for investing in the startup and one time cost for the development of the physical structure. But the operation of the center will be by a, a community provider with deep experience in this space. And to, I think it was Counselor, I'm going to say Counselor Adams, a question, or actually Counselor Robert, we expect, we have very strong providers in this region. We have very strong providers in this, in actually Clackamas County. So we anticipate that many of them will want to be part of this. And I think we're very fortunate because, as I said, the folks that we're working with have, have done some of these actually on their own. They've done like mini recovery systems. And so we've got some great folks in, in the, in the county and in the region. So we're very hopeful and, and they're very excited about this. And one of the other things that this recovery center as part of this system will bring in one of the biggest gaps that we see, and you in the field know this, when someone's ready for treatment, you can't say, you know, in a couple, in a couple, four weeks, we'll have something for you. Ain't going to happen. This is really focused on as immediate access as possible. So we want to have a place where these individuals can go. We talk around, we talk about no wrong door and, and that's true. But part of our job in the county is to help educate people as to where these services are, who the target populations are, because you don't want to have to call seven places to find the right, to find the right place. We're actually going to do a visual so people can see what the connectivity is. We're also talking particularly for the centers that are coming online, stabilization center first, the navigation center, recovery center. How can we have a shared data system so that we can share information with, about the individuals we're serving? But we're also not violating not only HIPAA rules, but actually the federal rules around sharing information for people with substance use disorder are, make HIPAA look like a walk in the park. So we have to make sure that we are adhering to all those. But there are, there are ways to do that. So we're getting together. We're also getting together about how do we look for funding and not compete with each other, because we really want people to invest in the system. So whether it's Health Sheer, the Coordinated Care Organization, Trillium, the state, supported SHS dollars, we're looking at how do we leverage all those dollars and braid all those dollars for the system. Different from the stabilization center, the operational dollars for this recovery center are coverable, coverable by Medicaid. And so, but of course, the person has to be Medicaid eligible. So we will be looking to our coordinated care organizations for funding the operations of the center. And then for those individuals who aren't insured, there is a, there is a smaller funding stream from the state. So again, we'll be, those dollars, those services do have codes. Some of the difference is also the recovery center is focused on people with substance use disorder as their primary disorder. Now, we understand and we know that many individuals with SUD also have mental health challenges, not a problem. But if they, if they, I don't want to say just, but they just have mental health challenges, they won't be referred to the recovery center. They may go to the stabilization center, they may go to other services that we have. But we really, we don't have any place in the county and actually very little in the region that really is focused on individuals. The primary issue is SUD. So again, we are going to be not only sharing information, sharing referrals, that our ability to communicate effectively is not only critical in-house, but it's critical to the people and the individuals we serve and their families. We don't want to confuse people. We want people to know, these are the types of services out there. Here's who you call, here's the outreach. We, we do want to be less reactive. And, you know, as Mary's group and in the community, certainly with law enforcement, EMS is a really important partner. They're seeing folks every day. We want to be sure we're partnering with them and bringing them, again, the transportation issue, bringing them to the center. It's typically, we don't expect people to kind of walk in off the street. We expect people to, referrals, whether it's from law enforcement, EMS, from the hospitals, from other providers who are serving these individuals, could be from families as well. So, and the reality is, we're going to start small. You know, we want to start small and do it right. So we're not going to build this, you know, gigantic, you know, 20-story center. And so we're looking at, you know, probably eight to 10 beds of detox, about maybe 20 beds of residential, and then we'll have maybe 30 beds of transitional. So, and then we can build on that. And so will everyone be able to be served at the recovery center and have immediate access? Probably not, but that's what we're going to work towards. That's the goal. And again, if, and if we can't serve them in the recovery center, who can? And how do we make sure that that connectivity is there? So the great thing is that we're all kind of, we're all looking at the same goal and there's going to be different ways to get there. But I think the recovery center is, there's, there are many gaps in the system. Stabilization center is going to be a fill, fill one gap. The recovery center, I think, is also going to fill a very important gap. And I think the approach that we're taking with this campus arrangement, I think, has great promise. We're also looking at bringing up multiple providers and we want people who have the expertise. Not everybody has expertise in treatment and job training. And so we've got, you know, we do have providers with expertise in job training. So again, like the Family Justice Center, I think you're familiar with that, where several providers come together and wrap their services around the survivors of domestic violence. It's the same type of a situation. We're looking and bringing in the best of the best, I guess, and, and to wrap them around those individuals and their families. So I do want to make one last nod to safety. Safety is paramount. Safety for the community, safety for the individuals being served and safety for the staff. It's not, it's not one against the other. We want to make sure that people being served feel safe, staff feel safe and the community feel safe. We don't have all the answers. Not as far, as far along as the stabilization center is, but we share that, that common goal and we will make sure that, that stands in front of everything that we do. And as we make the firm plans around those, we'll share them with you. I don't have all the answers to that today, but it is clearly part of everything we're doing. I'll stop.
Thank you, thank you both. Before I open it up for counselor questions, I did want to say one thing and ask one question. First, on this data, your slideshow, I received that through the DAC, through the NCPRD District Advisor Committee, and I did share that with counsel. We did not get it as part of this packet. So if you want it to be part of this packet, I ask you to please send Nicole.
You received it today. So that's what the PowerPoint is. We'll make sure that is put in the record and circulated to all of you.
Okay, great, great. And then secondly, I just wanted to ask, I know the county commission was originally scheduled to meet on this tomorrow and that's been postponed. Do you have a further timeline on that?
Not yet. We don't, we will notify people when that happens.
Okay, thank you. With that, I'll turn to Counselor Anderson.
That sounds good. And I see we're 30 over, so I'll try and keep it quick. I really appreciate what you're saying. This is a good pothole for us to work on together and try and find a solution on. I also appreciate that you're co-locating services here. I think about Washington County's CAT. They are doing some really impressive things there. And it also makes it a lot easier to get funding, be it from the state or other sources. And so doing something like that here in Clackamas County is great. My only question would be, you mentioned no methadone, but you do have MAT services? Is that just BUP or are you looking at some other MAT services?
No, we, we will have MAT services. When I was trying to say, this isn't a drop-in clinic.
Okay.
That was really, yeah.
Okay, that sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you. And we, by the way, we're pleased with what Washington County is doing. And I'm a big believer in ripping off good ideas. And so the work that they've done and, and those things that resonate with us, we'll also emulate.
I can add on that. We, I, I spoke to actually, this week is, is the Public Health Clinics Week. So I toured the Sunnyside Health Clinic and I spoke to the head provider there, the physician. And, and we don't do, there's some methadone, we don't only do a ton of methadone, we do a lot of suplicate and, and suboxone in our treatment process. We, we're trying to be very cutting edge and have the safest medication treatment that we can for people that need to wean off a substance abuse, have substance abuse disorder. And so I, I'm not saying we won't have methadone there. I just think currently the way that we are handling MAT is, I think, a little further down the road within where medicine is than where we're seeing in other entities.
Counsel President Massey?
I know there's a lot of steps that you have to go through before this is operational. But if every domino fell exactly as you wanted it, when would you be able to be operational?
Well, if every domino fell, I'd probably be in Italy right now. No. To be honest with you, given the pace of having to go through everything, you know, 18 months, 24 months, I think we're looking at probably closer to two years. I love to say 12 months, but I think a star would have to rise in the east for that to happen. So I think we're looking more at 18 to 24 months.
Realistically, two years. Thank you.
Yeah.
Counselor Coach Robati?
I, I don't really have too many questions because a lot of them were addressed in the light. And I understand the, the recovery center is, is different than stabilization. You did a wonderful job explaining that. And I'm really, I'm looking forward to seeing this model. Because I, I do remember Commissioner West, I was at a commission meeting and you had talked about it. It was something that you and Commissioner Schrader had visited together. And you touted it quite a bit and I was pleasantly, I was pleased with how much there was this movement on the commission to get this done. So I do want to appreciate you being here today and taking your time to, to reach out and try to build a coalition around this. I do appreciate that very much. And I really don't have any questions other than I'm excited to see this. And if there's anything that we can do, aside from the resolution, to be active partners, proactive partners, I'm all ears and I'm sure we are too.
Thank you for saying that, Counsel. I really appreciate it. We, Martha Schrader and I is.
Martha Schrader and I have been trying to, have been working hard on this together. She's fantastic. And we were in Austin for the National Association of Counties, and we took a trip down to San Antonio because we heard of New Haven for Hope. You can look up their website. And New Haven Hope is a 22-acre campus that's in San Antonio, it's in the city of San Antonio. We met with the commissioners of that county. We got an extensive tour of the county, and it was quite inspirational. And, you know, we had heard about it, we kind of wanted to do something like that. But once we had seen something like this implemented in a way that was embraced by the community, that really met the needs of the individual wherever they were at, and it was, there were so many different stakeholders involved that were committed to this, and the amount of success they had, and where they were filling the gaps in ways we haven't even begun yet in the Portland metro area, it was very inspirational for, I can say for myself and Commissioner Schrader, we've been very open about it. We were the two that went. And it has been something that's inspired what I think we're doing here today. And we'll be, we don't have 22 acres, and we'll be exactly like that, because we're Clackamas County, and we have our own community needs, and we're going to tailor it to what Clackamas wants. But thank you for saying that. And we're trying to be really innovative and work hard to solve a really persistent chronic problem. And we're trying to do it the Clackamas County way. We're a unique county in our own right, we're a big county. And that's also why we have been really intentional about working with our city partners, and our CPOs and others, and our faith communities and business community, and all those things is rolling this together. So thank you, Counselor.
Counselor Stavanger?
Thank you for being here, and thank you for your work on this. I have a couple of questions. One has to do with the medically assisted treatment. It's my understanding that there are certain types of treatment that aren't reimbursable. And I'm wondering if there are plans within this structure to have county general fund allocated to be able to make sure that all of those types of medically necessary care are available to people who participate in the programming?
I do not have an answer to that question tonight. If it's general funds, I'm going to have to bring it to the whole board. We have not had that discussion, yet where we're at. I can say, I assume that we will try to provide the best evidence-based, cutting-edge treatment available to those that have substance use disorder and treat it like any other medical disorder, and let them have the dignity and the care they deserve. And so if it involves us being creative and being open to what that is, I think that we have proven that so far as a county, that that's how we operate. And your specific question is fantastic, we should take note of it. I just don't have an answer to it today.
Totally fine. We've got two years. I think, you know, the biggest thing that I'm trying to highlight is that there are some gaps that sometimes show up in the systems that we try to pull together. And those are the gaps that people fall through. And so to have such an amazing resource like this and have it come online at the same time that we have other valuable resources, you know, showing up across the whole county, I think this is a perfect time for us to look for those gaps and try and fill them however we can. And that also makes me think about the future of Metro SHS, the supportive housing services funds, whether that's a sustainable funding stream, whether even the projections that are coming in in the next year are enough to be able to help with capital, to be able to get some of these things off the road, or off the ground. So I appreciate that you're blazing forward regardless, because this is a really important thing to do. One of the other questions that I had has to do with the scattered site housing that is available through the housing authority. And so, you know, we know that over the next two years, there will be a repositioning of that, of those assets. And that means that, you know, the 145 homes that are available in scattered individual single-family houses all across Clackamas County, those will be kind of consolidated into more traditional campuses. Hillside is one example of those. But in that process, it seems like that's a really amazing opportunity. And Adam and I had talked several months back about working with providers in the community to turn that into recovery-focused housing. And it seems like there's an opportunity to blend, you know, reimbursable funding streams with SHS funding so that we're able to make those nearly permanently affordable and have service infrastructure available. So I'm very interested in that. I would love to continue the conversation about that. There are 18 within the city of Milwaukee and another roughly 30 in the unincorporated urban pockets around our city. And these are folks that, you know, many probably already live in Milwaukee. So I guess that's not, it's more of a statement, not a question, but I'm really interested to hear your thoughts there.
So we've been talking, obviously, the recovery housing is really part of the system. And we see, for example, people coming from the recovery center after they go through the traditional housing to actually be coming to those recovery houses, particularly people who have medical problems. So again, we're not just talking, not just, but people with substance use disorder, because we know that there's a lot of medical and physical issues with those individuals. And so, again, we want to make sure that they're well-positioned back in the community, and that includes the recovery homes as one of those options. And I think you'll find that Clackamas is really good at braiding whatever funding is available. And so we're, for the recovery center, we're really not looking to SHS funds for ongoing operational dollars, we're looking at those for one-time startup funds, and where the Medicaid dollars would be the operational dollars, a little bit different. So to your statement, yes.
Okay, great. Well, I look forward to future conversations about that. And I know that the ask, Commissioner, is for our entire council to consider endorsing this campus and passing something in support of that. And so then I'll just go on the record of saying that you have at least one ally. I don't want to speak for others, but I'm sure if I made eye contact with them, I would see some nods. So I look forward to those conversations as well.
Thank you. I invite Counselor Stavanger to bring forward a resolution for consideration by the council.
Challenge accepted.
And I don't have any further questions, anyone else? All right. Well, thank you guys for coming. And yeah, we appreciate your time. Of all the county staff who came today, thanks, thanks very much for being here. Before we move on, I just want to say, I think whoever put timings on this agenda were a little optimistic about, because these were important conversations that required the time they took. So we are 40 minutes, 45 minutes behind. The people who are here for the land use appeal, I just want you to know, we are probably at least half an hour, if not 45 minutes away from that, because we have several other things to do, and we'll probably want to take a break before we start that. So if you want to go for a walk, you want to go for a beer, you want to go for, I just want you to know, we are still a little ways away from that item. So with that, I will turn it over to Counselor Anderson and Counselor Badi for the Oregon Nurses Association resolution.
In the spirit of keeping it quick, there's nothing new to the resolution. We just change it for some of the scrivener's errors and combining some more as clauses based on our last conversation. So I'll leave it to that side, because I think it's your side now in the second meeting to do a motion.
Oh, no, no, we're starting with you through the whole, oh, for the motion part. Yes, for the motion part, yeah. Yes. Anybody have any conversation they want to have, or are we just ready to go for a vote? Okay, okay.
Well, I move to approve the resolution calling for a fair and just settlement of negotiations with Oregon Nurses Association, nurses at Providence, Milwaukee Hospital, a community hospital owned by Providence, St. Joseph Health.
I second.
As we moved and seconded to approve the resolution calling for a fair and just settlement of negotiations with the Oregon Nurses Association nurses at Providence, Milwaukee Hospital, a community hospital owned by Providence, St. Joseph Health. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None heard? Resolution is approved unanimously. All right, community comments. This is the part of the agenda during which council will hear community member comments regarding city business that is not already on the agenda. Before we begin, is there any follow-up from the July 16th community member comments, Ms. Sager?
Mayor, the July 16th meeting, comments were provided by two of our waste haulers who are also here tonight. Nice to see you guys. So I think the follow-up will be the rate proposal that we're going to be voting on later this evening. A couple of things have come in, in terms of community comment between meetings, that I wanted to just daylight here for the record. One was a community member constituent reaching out about interest in a mural over the railroad bridge on 99E, or on the mural over 99E. What we responded to that constituent, it was, we don't own the railroad, we don't own the bridge, the railroad does. And we wanted to set expectations realistically. We think there's, it's often a lot of logistical coordination required to get things like that moving with the railroad, but we think it's a really intriguing idea. And we are engaged right now with ODOT, who owns 99E, and with the railroad on the Kellogg project. So we're going to, we're going to explore this one a little bit more and see where it goes. Just wanted to make sure that you were aware of this too, because there is a petition on change.org calling for this. And I think you are, the city council is one of the folks who the petition is addressed to.
Yeah, unfortunately, the petition is addressed to nobody who has--
Decision-making authority.
--control over the, yeah. And it is trysted entities that don't even exist, I think, in some cases, but anyway.
And then the second comment I wanted to just mention for the record was Maitri Dearmeyer's email sent in about crossings on 224 and crossing times. I think we may have briefly discussed this last meeting. 224 is not a facility that the city of Milwaukee owns or manages, so we don't have control over the signal timing. But I wanted to, you know, if counselors want to provide direction or take action on that as a council, or reaching out to ODOT, please feel free or let us know.
Are we not, I mean, we're working on, with ODOT on 224 and Monroe. Is there anything upcoming meeting where this fits into a broader conversation about 224, about ODOT, or, no?
We could not really identify one, and--
Okay. Counselor Anderson?
I'm happy to talk to folks at Region One that I know through Oregon Transportation Safety Committee. Even just like asking about a signaling change, I think, is easier if there's something in their code that they could do to start that conversation, if that's helpful.
I mean, I guess I'm a little, let's come back to this at council reports and not hold things up now, okay? Yeah, let me make a note. Yeah. Okay. All right. So with that, that's all the, okay. So if anybody is, I have no yellow cards. So I'm assuming nobody in the room is here wanting to speak on anything except the later land use application. Do we have anybody online?
We do not, Mayor BD.
Okay. So I think I will just bypass the script about public comment if there's nobody wanting to public comment. Okay. In which case, I will go to the consent agenda. Tonight's consent agenda includes minutes of the city council June 11th, 2024 study session, June 9th, 2024 special session and retreat, and July 14th, 2024 council dinner. Does any member of council wish to remove a consent agenda item? Seeing none, I will entertain--
Oh, sorry. The July 9th minutes have Counselor Abma coming in sometimes where Anderson is, and so to flip that. But if that's a scrivener's error that we could do, or if that's something that we just do later. I know.
That counts.
Scott's telling me something.
Our attorney is saying that qualifies as a scrivener's error. So we will, we will count on Nicole to clean those up as they get finalized. So with that, I will entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I second.
As we moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented with the noted scrivener's error, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no? None heard? Consent agenda passes unanimously. All right, now we will go to the solid waste rates adoption and fees update. And I invite Finance Director Michael Osborne to come forward.
Good evening, excuse me, good evening, council. I'm here just to bring forth the resolution for the adoption of the solid waste rates for fiscal year 2025. On July 16th, I believe, we all met to discuss the solid waste rates, and Chris Bell was here to give his recommendation for those rates. And this resolution is just to adopt what he proposed in his study. Our franchise agreement terminates in March 2025, and we're going to come back to council in the beginning of October to have a bigger discussion on what we want to be into that franchise agreement. So if there's any questions or anybody has anything to ask, I'm here to answer anything that came up.
Anyone with questions for staff? I mean, I think we all gave a head nod to the rates when we were here before, so I'm not seeing any questions.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so, Michael, so you're coming back in October to, and we're going to discuss the future franchise agreements, right?
Correct.
Including not just the duration, but the scope of the work done, because we raised a couple of issues that the council was interested in.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, go ahead.
And so we're going to talk about that full range of things in October?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Today is just to accept the rate increase for the year and nothing more.
Yeah, we just surfaced some potential savings--
Yes.
Especially in context of the increasing rates by Metro that we wanted to explore.
Yep, that and organic waste.
And organic waste.
All of those topics will be brought back in October 8th.
If no further questions, I will entertain a motion.
I will move to approve the resolution adopting solid waste service rates effective September 1st, 2024.
I will second.
As we moved and seconded to approve the resolution adopting solid waste service rates effective September 1st, 2024, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those aye, all those opposed say no? It passes unanimously. And then we have a second resolution because of the changes to the fee schedule.
Correct. This was just made to clean up the previous, losing the word, rate, a previous rate change that was made. I'm not sure of all the details. It was in the staff report, but this was something that Public Works asked to clean up.
There were some minor edits that did get captured in the last, very, like, transcripting a four to a three on the sentence, and then adding in the solid waste rates.
Correct.
Okay, if no questions on that, I'll entertain a motion.
I think the staff report was clear. I'll move to approve the resolution adopting a revision to the fiscal year 2025 fee schedule effective September 1st, 2024.
I second.
As we moved and seconded to approve the resolution adopting a revision to the fiscal year 2025 fee schedule effective September 1st, 2024, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say no? None heard? It passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And then reopening a public hearing, or continuing a public hearing, the continued public hearing on the proposed Neighborhood Hubs Code amendments is called to order. The purpose of this hearing is to hear the second reading of the ordinance by title only and conduct the final poll vote. Does any member of council wish to announce actual or potential conflicts of interest? That would be kind of late in the game to be doing that, but okay. On July 16th, 2024, council voted four to one to adopt the Neighborhood Hubs Code amendments ordinance. As required by our code, ordinance votes that are not unanimous require that the ordinance be read by title only at two separate meetings. Council will now proceed to the second reading of the ordinance and final poll vote. Ms. Sager, will you read the ordinance one time by title only?
Absolutely. An ordinance of the city of Milwaukee, Oregon, amending the Milwaukee Comprehensive Plan Commercial Land Use Designations Municipal Code Title 11, Miscellaneous Permits Title 19, Zoning Ordinance-- 19, Zoning Ordinance Title 14, Signs, and the zoning map for the purpose of implementing neighborhood hubs. Primary file number ZA 2024001.
And Ms. Manikin, will you poll the council?
Counselor Massey?
Aye.
Counselor Stavon, oh, excuse me, Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Stavon Jordan?
Aye.
Counselor Kozarbadi?
Aye.
Mayor Beatty?
No.
The ordinance number 2245 passes four to one.
Thank you. All right, well, we got through that faster than I thought, but I do think we ought to take a break, so let's come back by that clock, which, as noted earlier, is a couple minutes fast, but let's come back by that clock at 25 after. Thank you. We're back on the record. I see the, we're on air. This is the appeal of Planning Commission approval of land use file VR 2024-003. Well, now I'm repeating myself. The public hearing on the appeal of the Planning Commission's decision to approve land use file VR-2024-003 is called to order. This hearing will be based on the same evidence on which the Planning Commission made its decision. The council will have arguments about how the case will be decided, but those arguments must rely on the evidence presented before the Planning Commission. All persons wishing to speak on issues germane to this appeal must be recognized by the council to speak. Such testimony should be limited to the presentation of argument and commentary on the evidence already in the record and should not include any new evidence. Any new evidence presented by the city council, to the city council by any party, will not be considered or relied upon in the council's decision-making. Please keep this in mind when providing public testimony today. Any account of evidence such as facts, photographs, maps, drawings, reports, or your personal observation of a site that was not available to the Planning Commission when it made the decision being appealed will not be considered by this council. All other testimony that is directed to the applicable, to the applicable approval criteria will be received and will be used by the city council in coming through a decision on the application. Audience demonstrations or other disruptive behavior will not be tolerated. We, the city council, are here to listen to testimony and come to the best possible The purpose of this hearing is to take comments on the appeal filed by the Lake Road resident, by Lake Road resident Barbara Allen and the Lake Road Neighborhood District Association. The appellant has requested that council reevaluate the evidence that pertains to a proposed side yard setback variance. Staff will now cite the applicable standards to be considered.
The type three variance approval criteria are found in 19.911.4.
Okay, that was succinct. There's a long list of things. The order of business will be, wait, do I, am I really supposed to read all this? Discussions of site visits, jurisdiction. Okay. Okay. We haven't had one of these appeals in many years, and I know for everyone else on council, it's a first. For me, it's not the first, but it's been many years. And I'm a little surprised by the script. The order of business will be discussion of site visits, jurisdiction and impartiality. Staff introduction of the appeal, presentation of staff report, correspondence received, applicant presentation, testimony in support of the application, neutral testimony, appellant testimony. Okay, applicant is the landowner. Okay, and appellant is Ms. Allen. Okay. Testimony in support of the appellant, staff response to testimony, applicant rebuttal and final remarks, questions from council to staff, closure of public hearing and discussion and motion to continue hearing. Now, Ms. Allen, as the appellant submitted a yellow card, but she didn't really have to, right, because she gets her time. The NDA, two people have identified as NDA representatives. Are they also the appellant or are they not? How do we treat them? Typically, we give representative a group like an NDA 10 minutes as opposed to three. We wouldn't give them both 10 minutes. So I will let you think about that, maybe. We don't have to answer that question right now, but, well, I don't know. Vera, are you, do you have a view on that?
I guess all I can say is that Teresa Breezaw is the Lake Road NDA representative who's listed on the, the appeal application. But maybe I'd look to see the attorney about who-
And so is she and Barbara Allen the appellant? Do they both come up at the time when the appellant comes up?
No. The appellant is Ms. Allen.
Okay.
The NDA would get a 10-minute testimonial slot as an organization in support of the, of the appeal.
Okay.
Is probably how I would break it down.
So just so the neighborhood knows that, I guess.
And that, that 10 minutes can be split with a couple of speakers if they want a couple, but they don't get 10 minutes for each of two.
Right, right. So I will count on them to, I mean, the second person can get their three minutes just as a, as a resident of Lake Road, but yeah, we're only going to give the 10 minutes to one of you. Okay. The applicant has the burden of proving that the application complies with all relative comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance criteria. The city is in receipt of the appeal which identifies the issues and reasons for the appeal. All testimony and evidence must be directed toward the applicable substantive criteria. Failure to address a criterion precludes an appeal based on that criterion. Failure to raise constitutional or other issues related to the application with enough specificity to allow a response precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. Any party withstanding may appeal the decision of the council to the state land use board of appeals according to the rules adopted by that board. Persons withstanding are those who testify or sign the council attendance signup sheet in the hallway. Has any member of council visited the site? Does any member of, okay, does any member of council wish to announce any ex parte contacts or any conflicts of interest? No, me neither. Does any audience member wish to challenge a council member's impartiality or the ability to participate in this decision? Okay. Does any audience member wish to challenge council's jurisdiction over this matter? Okay, let's proceed to the staff presentation. Senior Planner Vera Colias.
Good evening, Mayor, councilors. Vera Colias, senior planner, here to present the staff report that was part of your packet, of course.
Okay. Does any audience member wish to challenge council's jurisdiction over this matter? Okay, let's proceed to the staff presentation. Senior Planner Vera Colias.
Good evening, Mayor, councilors. Vera Colias, Senior Planner, here to present the staff report. That was part of your packet, of course, for Appeal File AP 2024-001. Thank you very much, Nicole, for helping me get this. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Again, and I know, Mayor, you went over this already, but it's in my notes that the appeal of a Type III application must be an on-the-record de novo hearing. The standard of review for an on-the-record de novo hearing is a new evaluation of existing evidence, new and existing testimony, and new and existing arguments. Okay. Advance. Nope. Sorry. I thought we could just hit the arrows. Can't do that? Okay, there. No, Seth, great. Thank you. Okay. Wanted to take a couple of minutes just to walk through the basic Type III land use application process, and this is how we process all of our Type III applications, and that is how staff process this Type III application as well. It was processed per the usual Type III variance process, first with a pre-application meeting to discuss the application requirements. The applicant then moved forward, paid the application fee, which is $2,000, and submitted a complete application upon determination of staff review, which included the proposal narrative, responses to the approval criteria, all of which was included in your packets as part of the applicant application, of course. Application notice process included referrals to the NDA as well as city departments and agencies. There's a 20-day public notice, which is sent to all properties within 300 feet of the subject property. There's, of course, a staff report, recommendations, in this case, findings and conditions of approval. We had a public hearing with the Planning Commission who did issue approval for this application, and we issued the notice of decision on June 12th. Okay. The site in question is here, outlined in orange. It's located at 11932 Southeast 35th Avenue. It is zoned RMD, moderate density residential. Site contains a single detached home, and the lot itself is 7,160 square feet. It is surrounded by single detached homes except for the adjacent lot to the north, which is vacant and will at some point be developed in the future with middle housing. We understand it's likely to be a duplex. That property was split from the subject property last year as part of a minor land partition application. The property to the south of the subject property contains a garage structure. The existing home on the subject property meets the minimum required five-yard setback to the north, but has a pre-existing non-conforming side yard setback of .5 feet to the south rather than a minimum 10 feet required. In the RMD zone, lots that are over 7,000 square feet are required to have five-foot side yard setback on one side, 10 feet on the other. We allow for property owners to choose where those sides go. The code does not require 5 and 10 on any particular side. A fence approximates the boundary between the subject and the adjacent property to the south. Onto the proposal. So this is a site plan that shows the existing conditions on the property. You can see the existing house, and you see the red circle which outlines the side yard setback in question, where it's .5 feet towards the west, it's .7 feet, 1.3 feet as you move to the east, but the .5 feet is the side yard setback in question here. The applicant is seeking a variance to allow the construction of a 13-foot addition to that existing attached garage, and that is what you're seeing at the bottom of that site plan. The home was originally built in 1949 and has that existing side yard setback, so it's had this setback for decades and decades where that attached garage is located. Now, on this diagram, what we're, this is to illustrate the proposed construction. So the applicant wishes to remodel a portion of the garage into a bedroom and a bathroom to increase the living space in the house. Now, what you're seeing on this drawing in purple is both the existing garage and the 13-foot addition, so a portion of the addition is, so there's the addition of 13 feet, and then there's still a portion of the existing garage that will accommodate a one parking space garage space. So the addition is to allow for a usable garage, for a one-car garage, and then there's, and then there would be the finished space that you see in green. Being able to do, to remodel the area would not leave the applicant with usable garage space, so that's why this addition is being proposed for that 13 feet. You can see that a portion of the existing garage would still be garage. That's that area in purple kind of right in the middle. The 13-foot addition would match the home's existing front yard, front wall, and the front yard setback by aligning with the front wall of the house. The proposal would preserve garage space for the homeowner while still meeting all of the development standards in the RMD zone except for that minimum side yard setback because that's the existing non-conforming setback. As stated in the application materials that the applicant submitted to the Planning Commission, the desired remodel relies on the location of existing plumbing and refinishing a portion of the existing garage with an extension to the front just large enough to accommodate that usable garage space. So a Type III variance is required to allow the extension of that non-conforming side yard setback by the 13 feet. This is an aerial photograph of the subject property, and the red box is intended to just illustrate with an aerial photograph the approximate boundary of that proposed addition, that 13-foot extension. The driveway and garage on the neighboring property is visible just to the south in this aerial photograph, so you have a sense of the relationship of the adjacent property. This is a site plan from 2007, so the drawing was created in 2007 as part of a partition with the property at 11974. It created the lot that has the garage on it, which is addressed as 11972. What this is intended to show is, within this, with a scale drawing, you can see the existing garage just at the top of that drawing. That is the applicant's existing garage, and then you can see the garage that's on that 11972 parcel just to the south of that. To date, no applications for development have been submitted for that garage property in 11972 or any meeting house to discuss any development or construction on that parcel. This is a street view photograph of the subject property, which you can see outlined in, or circled in red. That is the existing attached garage to which there would be that 13-foot addition coming towards the street, and then you can see the garage on the neighboring property just to the right of the photograph, and then the next property over, which is 11974, you can just make out from that house just to the, to the right of that as well. This is a close-up of the existing garage on the applicant's property. That red line shows the extent, or the approximate extent of that, of that addition coming forward. So again, the extension would come forward 13 feet. The front yard setback for the property will have, will be 24.7 feet. The minimum front yard setback in the RMD is 20 feet, so it aligns the front walls of the house and would still more than accommodate the minimum front yard setback of 20 feet. Okay. When filing an appeal, the appeal application must be submitted during the appeal period after the notice of decision is issued, and it was, and it was done. This appeal was submitted during that appeal period of 15 days after the notice of decision was issued. The appeal is required to include a detailed statement that describes the basis of the appeal. Were there approval criterion or a development standard that was overlooked or incorrectly interpreted or applied, or is there an aspect of the proposal believed to have been overlooked or incorrectly evaluated? The appellant, Barbara Allen, the owner of 11972 and 11974 Southeast 35th Ave., and Teresa Briesa, on behalf of the Lake Road NDA, provided some of the following, the following arguments as a basis for their appeal of the Planning Commission's approval, and this was all, of course, as an attachment to the Planning Commission, or to the staff report for the city council. The appellant states that the basis for the appeal is that the approval criteria have not been met. The requested variance for the proposed addition does not avoid or minimize impacts to the adjacent property, that the addition extends an unsightly wall from 27 feet to 40 feet, which would be visible from the home at 11974 Southeast 35th Avenue, and then from a future home on 11972 Southeast 35th Avenue. Of course, they're here to testify to their own basis of appeals. I'm summarizing their appeal application. Staff notes that the code requires that only one of the criteria in Section 19911.4.1, .1, .1B is required to be met, not all three. I have provided a handout of what those approval criteria are, so just wanted to make note of that, that they are not required to meet all three of those subcategories. The appeal narrative also includes a brief history of the adjacent property to the south, a perceived relationship between staff and the applicant related to prior land partition application that we, that I discussed earlier, and information about the visual appearance of that existing garage wall, which is constructed out of cinder block, which is not atypical. Significant time is spent by the appellant discussing the condition and aesthetics of the existing garage wall, maintenance issues, and the perceived structural soundness of that existing garage wall. However, as the variance is specifically requested for a 13-foot addition, an extension to that existing garage, those arguments are not relevant to the application. This application is for that 13-foot addition, and that is what the Planning Commission reviewed as part of this variance application. It appears that much of the issue surrounding the appellant's objection to the variance is related to the appearance of the existing garage. Because the existing garage wall is not part of the existing application, I'm going to organize the analysis around the arguments related to the criteria that are applicable to the requested extension only, the subject of the actual variance approval. The appellant also includes mention of that minor land partition that I noted earlier that created that new buildable lot just to the north of the subject property. That partition was approved early this, earlier this year. It was submitted originally in 2023. The final plat itself was approved in 2024. It has no bearing on this variance application. That property is already partitioned off. The property in question now is 11932 Southeast 35th Avenue. Any evidence related to that partition, such as setbacks or alternative development plans, not considered. That relates to that, that relates to that portion of the property prior to the partition likewise doesn't have any bearing on the variance application because both are now considered existing conditions of the property. The approval criteria for a Type III variance, this is discretionary as a Type III variance. Again, you have printouts of this, so we don't have to keep the screen on as we do this discussion. One of the aspects of the discretionary relief criteria is that the applicant's alternatives analysis provides an analysis of the impacts and benefits of the variance proposal as compared to the baseline code requirements. And then this is that subpart B, that the proposed variance is determined by the Planning Commission to be reasonable and appropriate, and that it meets one or more of the following criteria, that it avoids or minimizes impacts, that it has desirable public benefits, or that the variance responds to the existing built or natural environment in a creative and sensitive manner. So the variance is only required to meet one of those three items, not all three. So in, when, in this analysis that staff did, and then in our recommendation to the Planning Commission, the question that we asked of Planning Commission is, is the request for that side yard setback variance reasonable, approvable, appropriate, and does that variance avoid or minimize impacts to surrounding properties? Staff processes these kinds of applications through the lens of what the applicant wants to do. So we look at what their proposal is and then review that proposal against the approval criteria. The findings talk about the analysis of the impacts and benefits of the requested variance compared to those baseline requirements and found that it is adequate and that that criterion is met. The existing home has a side yard setback of .5 feet already. It's an existing situation. Building an addition that meets the minimum 10-foot setback would not be feasible, given the construction of, of the home and the desired remodel and layout of that existing home. There's existing infrastructure in that garage, and that is why the applicant elected to move forward with that 13-foot addition to the, to the garage. In order to avoid and minimize impacts, the addition is one-story. It's not two stories. It includes a remodel of a portion of the existing garage into living space, keeping a portion of the garage, and then adding the smallest amount needed to maintain a usable one-car garage space. Without the variance, the garage space would not accommodate a vehicle after the remodel. The side of the existing home is adjacent to the neighboring and currently uninhabited property. The neighbor's home on the next lot to the south is setback approximately 26 feet from the street, so there aren't any impacts to the appellant's home or use of their front yard by this 13-foot addition. The variance application, the proposal itself responds to the built environment. The one-story addition, of course, matches the house, the one-story house. It matches to the front wall of the house, so it creates, it's matching the front wall house. It's not encroaching beyond the front wall of the house. It will have a front yard setback of 24.7 feet, which exceeds the minimum setback of 20 feet. The proposed addition would be located on a portion of the existing driveway, so there, no landscaping would be removed, and there would be no additional impervious surface created as part of this as well. The adjacent property is developed with a garage with a 40-foot front yard setback and a driveway located adjacent to the subject property with some, with landscaping alongside that, that fence. Therefore, the proposed addition doesn't impact the use and enjoyment of the neighboring property. There's a driveway there, right next to where this addition We also had a discussion at the Planning Commission about impacts from the proposed variance being mitigated to the extent practicable. Again, and that's one of those approval criteria. The proposed addition is adjacent to the neighboring property's driveway and garage with side yard landscaping. Therefore, there aren't any impacts to the neighbor's use and enjoyment of the front yard of the property at 11974 Southeast 35th. That's the next property over that has the, the house. The neighboring garage is setback, again, approximately 40 feet. It's not living space, so there would be no impacts on the garage by the proposed addition. The proposed addition provides for usable garage space for a vehicle, thereby maintaining two parking spaces on the subject property. And the proposed addition can be built without needing to access the adjacent property, so construction impacts would be minimized as well. If necessary, and as we discussed at the Planning Commission, a proposed for, a proposal for a new six-foot site impervious fence alongside the addition could be constructed to replace that three-foot one or adjacent to the three-foot fence to provide a buffer between that proposed addition and the neighboring property, and that condition was included in the notice of decision as well for the approval. So the Planning Commission did find that the requested variance was reasonable and approvable and appropriate based on its response to the approval criteria that I just summarized for you. Comments to the appeal application were in opposition to the variance in support of the appeal. Again, notice of appeal was given to the property owner, the applicant, the Lake Road NDA, property owners and residents within 300 feet of the property, and then all folks that were identified as interested parties in the original variance application, so anyone that signed up on the signup sheet or submitted comments during Planning Commission. So all of those folks received notice of the appeal itself. I just wanted to comment on a couple of things. Karen Kersey noted, she talked about the, or they talked about the unsightly appearance of the existing garage and included comments about encroaching on the neighboring side yard, and I just wanted to point out that the proposed extension to that garage does not encroach on the abutting property. So I just wanted to clarify that. Jonathan Hepner commented that the addition reduces development potential and prioritizes garage space over housing opportunities. We would argue that it does not. The proposed addition does not reduce the feasibility of developing the abutting property. The addition is solely located on the subject property, so it does, it does not encroach at all on the neighboring property. Mara Indra commented about impacts to potential development as well. Again, not relevant to the approval criteria. Construction feasibility is not relevant to the approval criteria. Again, while it's not relevant to the approval criteria, I just wanted to point out that the proposed addition would not impact future development on that abutting property that has the garage, 11972 Southeast 35th Avenue. Unless a variance is sought, any new development on that lot would need to meet all of the development standards that apply to the RMD zone, including minimum lot width for the location of the home. As shown on that site plan from that 2007 partition and testimony at the Planning Commission itself, the lot is approximately 41 feet wide at the sidewalk, so it's below the minimum width. So it's below the minimum width standard for where the house can be located. It gradually widens as you move east on that property. A new home would have to be located where the lot is a minimum of 60 feet wide, which is well behind where the proposed addition is going to be located. So the staff recommendation to council is to affirm the planning commission's decision to approve the variance. The final decision on this application, which includes this appeal to city council, must be made by August 28, 2024. You have some options this evening. You could affirm the decision under appeal with the existing findings for approval that were included. You could affirm the decision under appeal with modified findings of approval. We would need to read those into the record. You could reverse the decision with new findings supporting denial. We'll need to know what those are so we can prepare those. Or you could continue the hearing to a date. Again, August 28 is the 120-day deadline for this application. Happy to answer any questions or comments. And of course, there are lots of folks here ready to testify.
I had one clarifying question, which was my understanding of the of reading the findings and of listening to the planning commission hearing was that they did not identify one of the criteria as being met. They didn't pick one. They just sort of lumped the three together and said, some things met. Is that correct? They didn't actually say it's one, or it's two, or it's three.
The findings were summarized underneath, all three of them, but avoiding and minimizing impacts and responding to the built environment were how the findings were written. The public benefit, of course, it's it's a it's a private property. So the public benefit was not addressed in those findings, but the other two were.
Okay, thank you. Any other clarifying questions for staff? Okay. And with that, we will. So you you had a summary of correspondence. There's been no new correspondence later today. Okay, okay, great. Okay. I will introduce I will recognize those people wishing to speak, and any questions should be addressed through me. When you come to the table, state your name and city of residence for the record. Presentation times for all speakers will be limited. The applicant, the appellant, and representative of the NDA will be limited to 10 minutes. Other individuals will be limited to three minutes each. To those of you speaking, please confine your remarks to the relevant criteria, avoid repetition and irrelevant information, and avoid presenting new evidence that the council cannot consider. If additional documents or evidence are provided by any party, the council will not consider or rely on such evidence in rendering a decision on this appeal. Evidence means facts, documents, data, or other information offered to demonstrate compliance or noncompliance with the standard believed by the proponent to be relevant to the decision. Do we have anyone who wishes to speak in support of the application? The applicant has 10 minutes if she wants it. And you don't have to use the full 10 minutes. You have up to 10 minutes.
Good evening, mayor and councillors. My name is Christina. I'm the owner at the property 11932 Southeast 35th Avenue, Milwaukee. And I'm the applicant for this variance. The purpose of this application is to apply for a variance to the setback on my south property line. The reason why we would like to do this is because our garage has existing plumbing in the rear, which was there when we originally purchased the house. And we'd like to finish that bathroom and also add a much-needed bedroom on the portion of the garage that we'd like to finish, and then extend the rest toward forward, a total of 13 feet, allowing us to keep a usable garage space. The proposal will maintain the current half-a-foot setback for 13 more feet along my driveway. As already grandfathered, it would not make sense to switch from the half-a-foot setback to a 10-foot setback on that side. The lot coverage for the site will still be maintained under 30% in accordance with the standards. The proposal would comply with design standards by not extending more than the rest of the house already is extend. So it will just meet the rest of the house in the front, and it will still maintain more than the required front yard setback of 20 feet. The addition is one story and will not protrude into any driveways or affect the existing conditions on the next property. The variance is so that my setbacks would remain as they are half-a-foot, and my neighbor will still remain entitled to her own setbacks. The proposed variance responds to the existing environment in a creative and sensitive manner. I'd like to point out that existing the existing conditions of that property, because no trees or natural resources will be disrupted as the addition will be located and touching only my own property and located on my existing concrete driveway. The addition will have no effect on the opportunity to plant new trees, since, again, it is built on a currently paved area. During the development, we will also minimize any effects we can on surrounding environment as much as possible. The extension would have a roof siding and paint to match the rest of the house. And if allowed, we would also cover that old wall with siding and paint as well to ensure a seamless transition from the old wall to the new addition. We have been very mindful of design and maintenance of our house ever since we bought it in 2019. It was a rehab property in not livable condition. We have proved that we do everything with care and attention to all design standards, being considerate of the surroundings and improving the look and and value of the neighborhood. And in this construction, we will remain true to those values as well. If there's any questions, I can answer them.
Does anyone wish to speak in support of the application? I have a couple of I have some yellow cards that I don't think anyone has got. More in support of the application. Raise your hand if I have that wrong. Do we have anyone who'd like to offer a needful testimony? I don't think we have any of that either. Nope, okay. The appellant, as as previously said, the appellant has 10 minutes. And Christopher saw as per the NDA, so.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. As we didn't have any neutral testimony. We didn't have any testimony to support. Just coming back for the record, appellant Barbara Allen has 10 minutes.
Just before you turn on the clock, could I could I just clarify one thing? Because in the information that the planner gave, she referred to the appelle the appellant.
You're the appellant.
I was, but I was not the appellant of this. Or, you know, she she made reference to things that the appellant had said, things that in the at the appeal, at the original appeal. I was not the appellant then. I got three minutes to speak there. I would I would, yeah. So I just wanted to clarify that I wasn't the appellant because I'm called being called the appellant today. And so people will assume that I was the previous appellant, yeah.
I guess I understood her to be referring to your written appeal. But oh, and she's nodding. She was referring to your written appeal.
Well, you know, there are. You know, there are there are a couple of things here talking about the previous lot division, something that the appellant had said that there was bias. You know, that's not something that I said. So I just wanted to clarify that, okay?
Thank you.
So, yeah, so I am the appellant today. I'm Barbara Allen and mayor and council president, city councillors. Thank you for giving me the time here. Nice to see you in person instead of on front of the Milwaukee pilot. So I am here to oppose the the appeal. And, you know, I'm going to use my original letter as as my reference. And I'll do that in just a minute when I find it. Here we go now. So I am the landowner at 11974 and also the landowner at 11972. The lot was split in 2007. We were going to build a house on there for my for our mother, my husband's mother, my husband's mother. And eventually, we we made the decision due to her poor health, it was better to have her in the house. So so the house never got built. We'd already placed a drive on the other side of the property, as we had to do for the lot split. And after 6,000 for 6,000 pavers, we thought, well, we'll just keep it. So so we have kept the land. The land has not been developed. Has the garage on there that belonged to the original house. But when we split the lot, that property had to have another garage, which is on the south of the building. So that lot now is inhabited, as was pointed out. However, it's an inhabited, but it has value and has value to me as a landowner, value to the city. I pay property taxes on it every year, even though I don't live on it. I pay property taxes on the land and the garage. So I have some concerns about extending the wall. As was pointed out, the at its widest, at its narrowest point, the lot at 11972 is 41 feet wide. And then it widens out. And at some point, at the point it becomes 60 feet, then it's 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 buildable. So the front of the house would actually be the front of the property would probably be garden space. And Vera is quite right, there would not be a house there. There, I'm going to get some water. Not used to public speaking. So my opposition to the variance is that it was it was grandfathered in from the 1940s, as as you've probably already read. That in and of itself should not be the reason that 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 wall gets extended. There's been some references to my concerns about the visual appeal. And I do have concerns about the visual appeal. But, you know, when we're talking about visual appeal and aesthetics, what we need to think about also is it's not just how it looks, it's how it feels. You know, the the Milwaukee codes have been changed many times. Well, they've been many codes have been changed over the last few years. And there, I understand, I live in Milwaukee. I've lived in Milwaukee for 20 years. I live in, you know, the the country, the whole country is short of space to build. We we need to find accommodations for our citizens. And I I totally understand that. And it's important to move forward. The lot split that happened next door, I did not object to. It fitted all the criteria. There was, you know, the the criteria that had been set by the planners and the code builders for our building codes. However, the 10-foot, five, five-feet setbacks did not go away. Despite the fact that we're very in need of building space, middle-density properties get as that's a 7,000 square feet, a 10-foot setback on one side, a five-foot setback on another side. That seems to me that if that stayed, that was a pretty significant, pretty important consideration when these codes were built. And it's not just about the visual appeal. It's also about the community, the airflow, the the light. I know, I mean, I have three. Well, you've been to the property. You've you've been up there. My property has a lot of big trees on it. But, you know, light is so important. And as is visually being able to see around you. The garage that stands on 11972 right now actually will go away, and that that will be demolished. So from both both properties, that wall will be a formidable barricade as you look out. If I had the same consideration there as everybody else that lives in a middle-density area that's 7,000 square feet, that those walls would be set 10 foot further back. So the buildings already use 250 square feet of what should be vacant space. Vacant space for air movement, for light, for just to be able to see out into the neighborhood. It seems to me that that was pretty important. It's pretty important to me. What was less important? And, you know, I I followed, I I have a little bit of interest in planning and and development. My husband had more. And I remember, and I don't know how long you, I don't think any of you have been on the council long enough, but I do remember Christopher Alexander coming to Milwaukee. You know, I remember because my husband was so delighted when he came. You know, a pattern language was his Bible when he designed our house, yeah? I mean, the house was already built, but when he redesigned our house. I know the city of Milwaukee to be progressive, forward-thinking.
You've got a minute left.
Sorry?
You have one minute left.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, gosh, I haven't started. Okay, well, then I, but this is what I want to tell you in conclusion, okay? I've got minutes, okay? So what I'm asking you to do here is consider carefully your decision. Both Christina and I are here tonight because of decisions that were made before there was any city ordinances, yeah? The city ordinances didn't start until 1967, but this is the situation we have. If you approve the building of this wall tonight, that wall is permanent. Christina and I aren't permanent there, but that wall will be. And not only will that wall be permanent, it will open the door as a precedent for Christina to build on the back of the property too. So there's the potential for the building to on the property line to go even further back. And I would just ask you to consider that, yeah? It's, was that my buzzer? Okay, I'm going to stop. All right, okay. Well, thanks for listening. Well, thanks for listening to me, I really appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you. And I, oh, did council have any questions for the applicant? Oh, it does look like one of the counselors had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanna, we have to evaluate this case within the confines of the criteria that are spelled out in front of us. And one of the criteria that the Planning Commission found that this applicant succeeded on is the proposed variance responds to the existing built or natural environment in a creative and sensitive manner. And so considering the proposal, is it not fair to say that that 13-foot extension that parallels the front of the house and also parallels existing wall structure is responding to the existing built environment? Like, I'd love to just understand a little bit why I might be understanding this wrong if you disagree with that.
Well, I disagree with it because it will not respond in, in the fact that it will, it will block another 13 feet of property space. That's not creative or sensitive, yeah? The addition of this wall is not creative and sensitive. And the Planning Department's solution to this was to build a six-foot fence. How does a six-foot fence mitigate the impact of an eight-foot tall, 13-feet-foot-wide fence? You know, I don't know a whole lot about design, I've read a pattern language, but one thing I do know is when you build community, you do not build fences. Communities do, fences do not build communities. And if you're dictating that a fence should be built, what's behind it? What's wrong behind it? Fix what is behind it. And that, that's what I would, that would be my answer, okay?
All right, thank you.
Thanks for your minute.
Thank you. All right, I think we'll have Teresa Brisa next. She has 10 minutes as the representative of the NDA. And then the remaining speakers will get five, three minutes apiece.
Did you say three minutes?
Pardon? You get 10 as the representative of the NDA, but Mr.
Teresa Brisa, Lake Road Land Use. This is difficult because I'm not a public speaker, I like to write. I hope you read all those letters, all the letters from the people that took time to, to write their letters. They weren't paid for writing those letters, they did it because they believed in what they wrote. So I'm hoping everyone did read everything, because there's a lot of information there. And I do have, and the, I think the process is kind of adversarial to start with. They don't reach out, they send letters, they hope nobody will respond to those letters within 300 feet. It would be better if they could, maybe it's impractical, but to get feedback from people on just the idea of intensifying a non-conforming setback. Six inches, it's not practical. You can't walk around six inches. It either leads to encroachment by, you know, implied trespass or implied, there's another legal term for that, I'm sure. But in any case, it's not practical, it's not practical for maintenance. There is a crack going down the middle of it, and nobody seems to care about that. Maintenance is very important to me, when you're an older person, you've gone through maintenance issues with your home. So, but I do have these three pictures, and you may have seen them. The thing about these pictures, however, I did put these in on June 11th for the public hearing, for the first one, but they never got posted until August 2nd. Why did it take so long to post them? There should be for public record, that's one of my questions. And then we did send, Barbara sent an email saying people had permission to walk on a property so they'd be able to see the full view, not just from the street, but from her property. Not that she was trying to influence anyone or was inviting them for tea, she wanted them to have a different viewpoint, different perspective, but that was not allowed, even though it was sent to a city recorder, hoping that it would get to all of you. So they would be able to have, you'd have a different perspective. Looking from the street, you think, oh, no, it's no big deal, it's just two driveways side by side. But you really can't see all that well until you get close. And when you do walk around, you start getting a completely different feel of what's going on here. And I have these three pictures that were, have already been put into evidence. I don't know if you want to look at them again, maybe not.
You said that they were in the record?
They're in the record, but I don't know if you guys, anyhow. It's not an attractive wall, it should not be allowed to be built longer, it should not be longer. Gardening is very important, you don't want your plants on a south-facing wall. It's not, it's getting hotter and hotter, and it's very hard to keep those plants going. In any case, the criteria, I do think that the commission members, they rely on the planners. And when the planners say this can be built entirely from inside of the applicant's property, they just say it can be done, but they don't have any details as to how that can be done. And then they say, no, you can't ask any question about that, as to how it can be done. They said that's new evidence. Well, why would it be new evidence if they bring it up to say it can be done? The plant, the commission members are relying on the planning staff to give correct information. And as far as the variance goes, they didn't have to apply for a variance, there's other places to put. They could keep the garage, the garage is already there. They could keep that garage and they could put a, another room, bedroom they want, on the backside along with the bathroom, they could do that. But it's cheaper to do it the way with putting on the back of a garage, I understand that. It's cheaper, but it's not better for the neighborhood. So anyhow, so the criteria, I don't think was met. And I do think that the commission members rely on planning staff. And they pretty much, it's the end of the evening when they're, had already had all their issues for that day, they get tired at the end, they want to end the meeting. And so one makes a motion and the other ones kind of follow along. I was on the planning commission for eight years, I know how it works, they are influenced. And they don't know all the verbiage, all the verbiage of the, that the planners are telling them. They're keep saying, this is not relevant, this is not relevant, but there's real-world experience out there. And practicality is being able to maintain your property. And it's not being maintained at this point. And as far as the crack going down the middle, sure, I'm not thinking it's gonna fall in, but it is a maintenance issue that no one seems to care about. The state of Oregon, though, does have maintenance code. And so the building official can look at that and, and tell them that something needs to be done about that. So waterproofing is very important for a concrete wall like that. Let's see, I don't know if I covered everything or not, but it is a hard thing to go through this. So I do think, and the neighborhood, they think it's a bad idea in general, for every reason you can think of. Practicality number one. No way to maintain that property, there's no way to maintain it. And it has not been maintained for as many years as it's been there. It did, however, I heard, the front of it did cave in at one point. That's why it's darker on one end, it did cave in by, close to the garage door. So, and the, the way the planners presented it, I mean, they tried to do a good job, I'm sure, but for some reason, they just think it's, I don't know, I really don't know why they wanted to encourage this to go through. The commission members are really pretty much influenced by the planners. And I'm sure, yeah, I'm sure there's a good reason why they did it, but I don't know why. Other than the downstairs basement could be an accessory dwelling unit, because it has a, it has an outside entrance, which would be good for an accessory dwelling unit. So I don't know. Anyhow, anybody, I don't know if I answered everything. How much time do I have left?
Three minutes, 50 seconds.
Oh, okay.
Well, I would just say, we have pictures in the record.
Oh, good.
We have one large picture of the white stone, you know, cinder block wall with the crack. And then we have 10, that's at Page R S.
Okay, I just want to make sure everybody saw them.
Forty-eight.
Yeah.
And then we have like 10 other pictures later, so.
Yeah, and I'm sure your time is valuable as far as reviewing all this information. I cannot believe how much information you had to review on the other stuff, neighborhood hubs, all that stuff. I thought, wow. Anyhow, go ahead. You do get thirsty up here, by the way, I really don't like talking 10 minutes. Latest codes do not require garages in code as they do setbacks. 13-foot wall will hold a garage to block light, air movement, well, well, for sure. The garage really should have been kept as is, and of course, there was a crack, so they have to caulk that on both sides, because it did go all the way through, by the way. And the bedroom could have been added to the back of the house, there's plenty of space there. They did not have to do a variance, that was not necessary at all. So I know it's for money, economic hardship, but they're gonna be trying to make money. And they always say, the planners say, nothing's relevant. But they did this because they do have, and everybody would like to make money. So they divided up their lot, they're gonna have a duplex there, which is fine, not a problem with that. But it doesn't mean you can bend all the rules for other things. There is space in the backyard for putting a bedroom in there, there's plenty of space. And they can still plant trees too, there's plenty of space to plant trees. I don't know, anyhow, I don't know, did I answer everybody, any of these questions?
Anyone have questions for Ms. Brisa?
I don't think the criteria was met, by the way, I could go over each, all three of those, I know it was not met. It is not sensitive to the environment at all. It's only sensitive for the applicant as far as her getting a garage enlarged or big enough for a single-car garage, but it will block the light in her house to put a garage out there. If you look at the, the view from the top, it's gonna block light, it's not gonna make her house any better. Yeah, she could, the garage could be put, left as a garage, and the bedroom could be added to the back with a, with a bathroom. I know there's plumbing back there, so.
Did you want to say anything else about the criteria? You addressed the.
Can I see it on the thing, or I'll find it here somewhere.
The other one was avoids or minimizes impacts to surrounding properties.
You can't really avoid and minimize an impact from, you can't do that. To go from a 27-and-a-half-foot wall to 40-foot, you can't, you do not, you can't avoid it, it makes it worse. It's just a solid wall blocking light, reflecting heat, air circulation. All those plants that were planted there were designed for parcel natural heights, nothing to get too big, so it'll fit the space, but it's a nice green, it's a nice green space. Beautiful, I think, anyhow. Yeah, so I don't think they, I don't think the criteria were all met. It's hard to be organized, by the way, it really is.
Okay, well, with that, we will thank you.
Okay.
And I will go on to, so the remaining two speakers I have are Paul Hawkins for three minutes and then Mara Indra for three minutes.
Paul Hawkins, Lake Road Neighborhood Land Use. Had a majority of the Planning Commission members visited the property beforehand, would a more objective vote maybe have canceled this? Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. You win the brevity award for tonight. Mara Indra.
I'm gonna read because three minutes is tough.
Okay.
Hello, my name is Mara Indra, I live in Portland, but I'm a hopeful Milwaukee resident. I have worked in the field of architecture and construction for 26 years and am an owner of a residential construction company. My family has been looking for property in Milwaukee and we've been considering the site to the south of the subject property. I object to the variance proposal. Object to, the proposal requests that you overlook important setbacks intended to safeguard the responsible development of middle-housing density projects. The purpose of setbacks is to protect equity in long-term neighbor relationships as well. The impacts of the proposal were not fully considered in the variance application, staff reports, or the planning commission hearing. Impacts to the adjacent property only note the existing detached garage. There were no, there was no consideration of impact to future homes on the adjacent property. This seems short-sighted and at odds with the zoning goals to support and encourage middle-density housing. None of the three approval criteria are met. I outlined this in detail in my letter of opposition that I submitted. Some considerations are a duplex or middle, other middle-density housing may be built on that adjacent property with two families or more living there. The variance proposal creates a combined 40-foot-long building mass on that shared property line at the front-most visible corner. The proximity of the proposed addition negatively impacts architectural placement of new homes on that adjacent property. It reduces the connection to the street frontage. It reduces view opportunities from indoor and outdoor living spaces. Impacts access to daylight, ventilation, privacy, emergency response access. The construction constraints of building on the property line are many and will require the compromise of residential design character for the new addition. And then the proposal does not provide access for long-term maintenance, which will become a long-term management challenge between the neighbors. The proposed fence falls into this category of long-term maintenance challenges. Approval of this variance would actually harm the public by setting a dangerous precedent about the lack of importance of setbacks for other properties in the zone. This proposed variance doesn't meet the approval criteria. However, I believe the applicant's needs could be solved for in a different way with fewer construction constraints and with fewer negative overall impacts. I respectfully ask for you to consider the goals of the zoning code to support responsible development and to consider the current and future neighbors impacted by this variance proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that concludes our public testimony. No, go for it. Well, just come speak and you can fill out this slip afterwards, you get three minutes. Three.
Three, all right. Much like everybody else, I'm not a public speaker. My name is Matthew Bax from a resident of Milwaukee, I live on 35th Avenue. I bought my house five years ago. When I did, my family and I, we thought this was gonna be a great single-family area. I didn't understand any, any of these variances, well, thank you. But it seems like there's not a lot of support from the neighborhood for this project. I think allowing a variance would negate a lot of like the neighborhood district, Lakewood Neighborhood District Association, a grassroots organization, opposition from the whole neighborhood. My main concern, I think a lot of neighbors' concerns are if this variance is allowed, what's gonna stop the next duplex from being built in what everyone would consider a single-family neighborhood? I mean, I kind of, I was sick when the, this, the proposal for the blending a lot and then these guys doing a duplex. I mean, I, I think that's getting a bit much. And I don't know what's gonna stop another place, someone like, like Barbara said, she and the neighbor are not gonna be around forever. My property runs next, close to Barbara's. When they have to sell, when they're gone, what's gonna stop someone who buys a property and, and builds, you know, a, another duplex or a bigger apartment complex? And they want to go over, if they want to like do a variance on setbacks and everything and livability, I mean, that's, that's kind of the big concern is like, what stops that? So if this variance goes through, it seems like that opens the door for more people to do. Just getting closer and closer, I don't know. But I'm not a public speaker, but that's what I have to say, thanks.
Okay, fill out your yellow card. I will just note that in Milwaukee, as in pretty much all of Oregon, you can build up to a fourplex on a lot in that neighborhood. So you So, um, you will see more duplexes and triflexes and, um, so anyway. I am going to turn with that to staff. Does staff have any response to the testimony?
I, I did just want to clarify, um, for, um, for Teresa Bresel that the, the pictures were included in the public record in the packet. They were posted as required. So they were made available to the planning commission. They were scanned in and then were made part of the appeal record for city council. So you, they were included in the packet. I just want to make sure that she knew that all of those pictures were, um, were viewable for all of that.
Sorry, no. We're, uh, you should have, yeah. Go ahead.
And I guess I, I would, I did just want to say one thing. A couple of folks have mentioned the idea of, of variances setting precedent. Um, and just that planning staff, as well as the planning commission, reviews variances on a case-by-case basis. So approval of any variance, this one or any other variance, doesn't automatically mean that future variances get approved. Everything is reviewed, um, on the merits of the case itself, not on prior approvals. So I just want to, that's, that's our policy and always has been.
Um, so I had a clarifying question for you, which is, um, I'm not going to remember where it is, but you are the master of our zoning code, so you will remember where it is. There are places in our code where someone has to show that they considered alternatives and why the alternatives didn't apply or couldn't work. We don't have, I know that's in the floodplain and I don't know where all that is, but I think we have probably a couple of examples of that in our code. We don't have that here, right? We don't have to show that there was an alternative place. They could have built it in order to get the variance. Or that there was no alternative place that, in order to get the variance.
Correct. They don't have to show that there was nowhere else for, for it to be built. The way the criteria is written is that, um, that there is, that alternatives are considered. So it does talk about an alternatives analysis, but that at a minimum, that there is an analysis of the impacts and benefits of the variance as compared to the baseline code requirements. So the way this was evaluated based on what the applicant, what Christina submitted, was that based on the construction of the existing home, where the existing infrastructure was for the plumbing and so on. That's why, um, they proposed the addition where they did, based on the existing construction of the home. So she did not pursue other alternatives because this is what made sense for the proposal that they were, for the remodel that they wanted to submit. So that's, so you are correct that, um, there are other sections of code, particularly the natural resources code that talks about, you sort of need to show that there's really nowhere else for this, for it to go or something like that. In this case, you're in, you are to show, um, the impacts and benefits of your proposal based on other, um, other places that, that the remodel could have happened. But based on what their proposal was for that remodel, again, the location of the bathroom and, and kind of how the existing home was built, that's why they pursued this alternative.
Did I see other questions for staff? Counselor Anderson looked like he was about to ask a question. No?
He just looks like he's so confused.
Okay, all right. All right, uh, and so applicant rebuttal and final remarks. So Ms. Federowski, if you have anything you want to say in closing, you have up to another 10 minutes, but you, of course, do not have to use a full 10 minutes.
Well, I could kind of respond to some of the concerns raised. One of them I'd like to respond to is the future construction. The approval criteria specifically states existing conditions, um, not future conditions. So I believe my, um, application meets at least that criteria in itself, as well as minimizing all impacts. It doesn't say like, that we can avoid them 100%, but we will try our best to minimize all impacts to the adjoining property. And, um, as mentioned before, this addition is built only on my concrete driveway and will not protrude any further than the house already does. So that's, those are the two kind of rebuttal, um, points that I have. So in conclusion, I believe that the planning commission, um, was professional and they based their decision off of the code, um, solely based on the approval criteria, which is written for us as a guide. And I think it was written to protect applicants such as myself, as well as, you know, neighbors and the surrounding environment. And I think in this application, I, I believe everyone is accounted for. If it were to allow me to improve my home and as well as minimizing the effects as much as possible on the surroundings. So, and regarding the, maybe building in a different area, it really doesn't make sense with the layout, our layout of our house. We'd have to tear down a kitchen if we were to do it in the back. Or if we were to build it in the back of the garage, there would be, it would not be connected to the rest of the house. We would have, it would be like a detached bedroom. So there would be no access to it, any, any, any other place. And then on the other side, we have a staircase going down to the basement and then on, on the, on the, what is it, north side, we, we would have to take down two bedrooms to, I don't know. Like, it just doesn't make sense any other way. So we did think about those options prior to applying this way. It just really makes sense. I also feel kind of that this house was set up that way before, uh, at some point in the past. So it makes the most sense and I believe it does minimize as much as possible all impacts to surrounding vegetation and area. And, um, it responds in a sensitive manner to the existing conditions.
Okay, thank you. All right. Does any member of council have questions regarding the testimony to this point? If there are no further questions, I will entertain a motion to close the public comment part of the hearing.
I move to close the public comment part of the hearing.
I second, I'm the second.
It's been moved and seconded to close the public comment part of the hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. None heard, the comment, the public comment part of the public hearing on the appeal of the planning commission's decision to approve land use file VR-2024-003 is closed. Is there any council discussion?
I don't have much to say here. Um, I think our purview is pretty small. I want to thank you all for coming. Like, it is a scary experience to sit there and have to speak. Barbara, you powered through a long testimony and you were able to survive, so well done. It could have been longer. I, I just want to say like, the reason, to me, what I see really clearly here is, when we think about this, the two criteria that the planning commission identified, could you avoid or could you have minimized it? It's not just avoiding it outright, but finding a way to do it as minimal as possible. And I appreciate at least an applicant, and I want to explain my reasoning because I think a lot of you might disagree with it. I see the existing building has that six-inch setback and it continues along that line just by 13 feet. It goes up to the front line of the property and it still is well, um, it still has a frontage that is well beyond what's expected in code. And so it's not some two-foot or, uh, or sorry, two-story or three-story extension on top of the existing garage or some large facility. I think in the sk, in the grand scheme of things, it seems relatively smaller than it could have been. And I appreciate that it also considers the existing built environment. Those are all reasons why I tend to say that this does fall in the purview of, I guess, the criteria that we have spelled out here. So I think that's all that I have to say in discussion, but I appreciate all the comment today.
Council president?
Well, first of all, um, I want to commend Ms. Podorski. I'm sorry if I got your pronunciation wrong for coming in and improving a property. And I certainly understand your, uh, desire to expand your living space. I will tell you that, um, uh, I am focused on two very narrow aspects of this, uh, um, uh, appeal. And, uh, as a former planning commissioner, I think I understand this pretty well and can kind of get it down to, uh, just a few areas. I, I have no, uh, uh, the ideas of aesthetics, possible future uses and that kind of thing. Just don't enter into my decision-making or my recommendations. So, um, the first element that I look at is the proposed variance of a ways or minimizes impacts to the surrounding properties. So we have setbacks for a reason. So that we're not on top of each other. And, uh, over the years, those setbacks, um, um, have been reduced. They were reduced recently, um, but they haven't been reduced to six inches. Okay? And so, um, uh, I, I think that the, you know, that those setbacks are there because we don't want, you know, walls that go forever along the property lines. And, um, there was mention that, well, there's only a garage and there's 26 feet, uh, on, uh, on Barbara's, uh, property and that kind of thing. But that's almost like shifting the burden of a setback to Barbara, in my view. So I don't think that that, uh, uh, has minimized the impact of surrounding properties. Then we go to the proposed variance response to the existing built or natural environment. Look, this, this, this structure was situated inappropriately, poorly, whatever you call it, you know, in the 1940s. We can't do anything about that. We're not going to tear the place down because it doesn't meet the current, um, setback requirement. But I don't think that we want to take that poor placement and extend it. So I don't think that that's a, a good response to the natural or existing built environment. That's how I view it.
So you would uphold the appeal?
Let me think about that. Uphold the appeal? Yes.
Yes, okay. Counselor Coastalbody?
Thank you. I just want to again, thank everyone for showing up. This is, this is a big, it's big to have an audience for us because we usually don't. And it's nice to see people coming together for, for each other and looking out for, for each other. I also spent time on the planning commission with Council President Massey. Um, and one thing I do know is that, uh, it's not all three criteria that needs to be met. It's only one. Uh, it doesn't have to meet all three. And you can actually make an argument for the third criteria that it does provide a public benefit and that it does add to our housing inventory and increases living space for a family that otherwise may have to move out of Milwaukee. So there is a public benefit to these things. When I look at this property and I look at the criteria, considering that the 60 feet start farther back, I don't see how the 13 feet would make a difference in blocking any view because you'd have the existing garage that's right there right now already blocking it, considering how far back the, a future development would have to be built. Speaking on future development, we also can't, we can't make decisions on hypotheticals. You know, just because there's a potential for future development doesn't mean we have to deny somebody what they're currently seeking. My time is up. Thank you, everyone. I appreciate, I appreciate you guys coming. That was a good one. But yeah, I, I, you know, having been on the planning commission, uh, again, the, the six, the six-inch setback is not ideal. But it was also built at a time where setbacks probably didn't exist. It was also built at a time where we can't hold the current family responsible and accountable for that. And we shouldn't, I, I don't feel that we should force them to have to fix a problem from 60, 70 years ago. That, that, that's not, that's how they bought the home. It doesn't seem feasible to make them, I mean, you can't move it. You can't put a, a setback and have them go move the, move it north because then you're going to cut into other property. It, it would cause, I mean, it, it sounds like the applicants did consider other possibilities just on the fact that they were saying that they tried here, they tried there. And, and again, you know, it may be easy for us to sit here and say, oh, well, why don't they build it in the back or build it here or build it there? But we're not the one who's paying for it. So that should be considered as well. I mean, we don't know that individual family's circumstances, right? We don't know if they have the financing. We don't know, this might be the only way they can afford it. And as somebody who has a family, um, who lives in a kind of a small house, it's, it's something that's considered, right? The precedent piece, I, I thank you Vera for, for talking about that because it, it doesn't set a precedent on planning commission. Each, each thing is case by case. It's not like, um, you know, case law where you can look back at, you know, you know, Roe v. Wade or something like that to use that as a, as a reason to get your, your variance approved. So just looking at the criteria and, and what's, what's there, I, I don't think it's out of, I don't, I don't think it's out of line. I think on one of the three, you can make an argument that it does meet, that it does comply with one of the three criteria. It being six inches right now, I mean, that trying to avoid it, it sounds like they did. Trying to move to the back, to the side, to the thing, to the, I mean, looks like they looked at multiple options. So, um, I don't see a direct impact on the living space of the adjacent property either. The only impact it has is potentially would be on a future development, which we cannot make a decision based on a non-existing future development. With that said, I, I, I just, I, I don't see, I understand the concern and I understand that not everybody likes something new that's going up that's right next to their property. But there's a reason why we have these criterias in place. There's a reason why we have these codes in place. Uh, and based on the code, um, it's appropriate because it is non-conforming. There's also a code for that. So, um, with that said, I, I think it does meet criteria.
Counselor Stavon Jordan?
Well, like my colleagues, I want to thank you all for being here. It's, uh, I mean, we're, we're here every first three Tuesdays, by the way, if you want to come. It's, it's hard when we try to think about planning code and fit it into the reality of our everyday life. It's even harder when, um, when you're in a community and you want to feel ownership and, and a togetherness within that community. So, um, the, so the struggle of this decision and what you've been experiencing, all of the neighbors and the two, um, you know, property owners most affected, that's coming through tonight. So please know that, that we're hearing that. And I wish there was an easier solution, but, but the hardest part, um, is when building decisions have been made before we even call a place home. And I think that that's in part what the, the situation that we're dealing with, with the particular setback. The, the evidence around this issue, um, is clearly lined out. And unfortunately, um, because of the nature of the way that these hearings are structured, this is, this is the information that we can consider. It's all that we can consider in front of us. We have to be very clear about, um, the approval cri, criteria and, um, whether the evidence in front of us meets those criteria. The hard part is when you're buying a home, you can't help but plan for the future, right? That's the, you, you want to put down roots. You want to think about how that is going to become your home. So it's very hard, um, to not think about the future when you're interpreting the code that applies to that home as well. But the, um, but the situation that we're in is that we have to, um, take all of this information, um, into account in, in terms of the, the present application and not necessarily what, um, either property owner is going to do in the future. And I think that, uh, while variances... And I think that while variances are indeed decided on a case by case basis, I think that situations like this can impact the sense of community that you feel and, and the way that you might wake up and walk around your neighborhood tomorrow morning. And I'm, I'm sorry that, that both property owners are going to go through that, you know, regardless of what we decide. And I just, I want to also say that, you know, I feel like I can speak for the planning commission, I hope, and our council when, you know, we've been here for hours and hours, but that's okay because we take this very seriously and we know that you take this very seriously. And so it doesn't matter how late the meetings go. Although I'm sure you do want to go to bed at some point this evening. But I just want to make sure that you know that we're hearing what you are saying and we're trying to take all of these pieces and fit them into the process that we have to use to make this decision. It doesn't mean that, that we don't feel your pain through this decision. And I guess I'll stop there. But I really appreciate you being, everyone being here tonight.
And so what's your view on the decision?
My, yeah, you didn't like the whole speech?
No, I loved the speech. You just didn't address the criteria and how you thought they were bad or not.
I think that the criteria are clear. I think that the planning commission interpreted the, the information correctly and I'm prepared to, to uphold their decision this evening.
Okay, thank you. Looking at the attorney and our city man, acting city manager, we are supposed to have a motion?
Because it's a, there's a hearing, we can go to 11. No motion to extend. But let's not go to 11. This goes to 11?
It's like, what's the movie?
Spinal Tap.
And if I may, I just want to take this opportunity because I've been watching some linguistic badminton being played here. We're not upholding the appeal or denying the appeal. This is a de novo hearing, so you are coming up with your own decision tonight to approve or not approve the application.
The application? We're making a decision on the application, not the appeal?
Well, it's a, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
You, you are tasked with making the final land use decision for this application. So it's a trial, or a here, a de novo hearing on the record. So it's the evidence that was submitted below in front of the planning commission. But you're coming up with your own decision today.
Okay.
So it will be called for a vote to approve or not approve the application.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. And thank you to everyone who came out today. I, Teresa Brisa was right about the late nights and that some people want to, sometimes people want to dispose of things, but I do, I do agree with Counselor Stavon Jordan that we take it seriously. We, I'm actually the night owl here, so I, I'm never in bed before midnight, so this is, this is early. But also, I think one of the points Teresa Brisa made about the process sort of should encourage more dialogue between neighbors. And that's one of the things that I, you know, I've been kind of, I mean, I, yeah. I feel like, I feel like there was a lost opportunity, frankly, at the planning commission. There was a planning commissioner who brought up, Commissioner Fuenmaior, who brought up concerns about the width of the driveway or the garage and wasn't there an alternative that where it could be narrower? And I think those concerns, and also the fact that the planning commission didn't actually discuss any individual criteria and say, yes, we think this criteria, we think it is, we think it is, yes, we think it's got a public benefit, or no, or we think, no, we don't, yes, we think it's responding to the environment in a creative, sensitive manner, or no, we don't, yes, we think it avoids or minimizes the impacts, or no, we don't. I feel like those decisions should be more clearly articulated. I do feel like it might have been a meeting where a continuance was in order to let some of those things be discussed and let maybe the neighbors talk to each other more. I do wonder how that, how that new wall gets painted without walking onto the property. But anyway, that's not a criteria before us. But I do think there was a lost opportunity to continue that meeting, to have more discussion between the applicant potentially and her neighbors, to have more exploration of the concerns that Commissioner Fuenmaior was raising. That said, we are where we are and we have the decision before us. I personally don't find that it's a creative or sensitive response to the built environment. I do think there's an argument that there's a public benefit in, in enabling people to build more bedrooms in their house to accommodate a growing family. I also think there's potentially a public benefit to providing off-street parking in this world where we have less and less of that and we don't have to provide it where someone wants to provide it. I think there may be a public benefit to that. So I think there's a discussion to be had there that wasn't had at the planning commission. But I do, I do agree in the end with the point that this is a 13-foot addition on a one-story wall. It is a minimal impact on the neighboring property. I do think, I mean, I do agree with the point that the existing center block is an eyesore and I hope that when they rebuild, there's a potential to build something nicer and maybe there's even an opportunity to paint a mural on the side of that wall or something. Yeah, I mean, I do think the, I mean, I certainly agree with the council president that the half-foot setback is a problem. And I do actually, I have added it to my notes to talk about a code change that says someone can't choose the lesser of five or 10 foot when they have a non-conforming setback on the other side. Because I don't think, I mean, all of our code is about coming more into compliance, all of our things when you're, when you're, when you've got some non-conforming thing, it's always about coming more into compliance. And so I think that's, you know, but that's not, that is not part of the application before us. You know, I, I, I hear the council president's concerns about a 40-foot wall versus a 27-foot wall. I guess I feel like, on balance, it is, it qualifies as minimizing impacts to the surrounding properties. But I do hope the neighbors might work together on that. Anyway, so it sounds like we have a 4-1 vote, if I'm hearing things correctly. Counselor Anderson?
To clarify, I like that you're doing a little vote counting. Are we thinking about a motion to modify? Because I know the planning commission found it passed on criteria one and criteria three, but I've heard both you and Counselor Coster-Buddy discuss a public benefit. Are we?
No, that's number two.
Are we going to say, we're throwing down all orders, but are we going to say then, consider maybe a motion that modifies includes that public benefit or no?
I would counsel against that. I don't believe there's evidence in the record to sustain that. That was brought up in deliberations, so.
So we should stick with one or three or both?
Right.
But we don't have to do both?
No, you don't have to do both. But you need to make a finding.
Well, we also heard from the applicant that she doesn't want the fence, right?
Well, that's a condition of approval that was, was imposed by the.
I'm sorry, it wasn't the applicant, the appellant who said she didn't want the fence.
Right. It was a condition of approval imposed by the planning commission. You don't need to impose that same condition of approval in your decision if you don't want to. You've heard testimony, I believe, from the appellant that she's not interested in a fence. Certainly, they can, they can work that out amongst themselves if it's not a condition, but that's up for you based on the testimony you've heard to decide.
And can I clarify? If we only found either one or three, the justification that we relied on, we would have to modify the planning commission's decision or?
You're rendering your own decision here, so you will have findings that will be prepared by planning that will incorporate the elements of your decision. So based on the evidence in the record and the testimony and new arguments that you've heard today, you need to decide which criteria were satisfied to either, if you, if you wish to approve the variance. Does that make sense?
Yes, I only point that out in our script. We have some different language.
Yes.
So would it be a modification if you removed the fence requirement too?
Yeah, yeah.
So I mean, so there's language for the public that's out there. There's language in our script that says, council is asked to give staff direction of whether we want to confirm, modify, or reverse, and staff will repair a final order based on this discussion for August 20th. Is that what you want to do? You don't want to try to wordsmith it tonight and get to something amended findings tonight?
I mean, we certainly can. The final order is a document that talks about what happened tonight. And if you're sort of pulling in the, in previous final orders when we've had appeals, you can modify aspects of it, but the final order talks about the city council, if you so choose, to, that you sort of, you're pulling in the planning commission findings as modified as follows. And then we're sort of, it ends up being a modification of the findings so that, I'm not rewriting all of the findings, we just kind of tweak the ones that you want to tweak if that's what you want to do. And then the final order is sort of set up as a separate document that documents kind of what happened here, the testimony received, what your discussion entailed, and then kind of what the final thing is. But if there is some specific language that you want to adjust within the findings that the planning commission found for those approval criteria, for example, I can do that and that can be memorialized in that, in that final order. Or I can come up with a draft and we can talk about it at, you know, the 20th and we can tweak it there and be done with it. Either way, we're done with it on the 20th, but I was just kind of hoping to get some direction from you on what am I tweaking, I guess, if that's possible.
The final order is an operative document. It triggers your appellate rights and a variety of other things, so it's very important that we get that right. So that's why we typically, we would have a vote of however you, you're either approving or denying, and then Vera will prepare the findings and bring that back.
So I want to mention that in cases like this, Clackamas County has dispute resolution services that are specifically set aside for neighbors to talk about fences, property alliance. It wouldn't have an impact on this decision tonight, but it would give you a place to have a conversation about a fence or a mural or paint, something, something along those lines. So I don't feel like that's an appropriate level of granularity for us to get into today, but I do want to call out that that resource exists if the neighbors are not able to come to consensus between the two of them. I would like to try to propose some language around a motion and see if that, if that meets your muster. So I move to direct staff to prepare a final order to modify the planning commission decision to remove the conditional approval element of adding a fence and approve the variance requested by Kristina Federovski for an addition to the attached garage at the property located at 11932 Southeast 35th Avenue, land use application VR 2024-003 for council to consider on August 20th, 2024.
I'll second.
Well, I'm not happy with the motion. Sorry, I appreciate the effort, but I really do want to talk about the criteria. So I'm not willing to approve the planning commission to the extent they relied on criteria three, only on criteria one.
Okay. Well then, question for the, for the attorney. Does that mean that since there's a motion on the floor, we need to vote down that motion? Or does that mean that we can entertain a friendly amendment from the mayor?
Friendly amendment to amend the motion. However, I'm not certain whether there are not two other counselors, one to support your motion and a third to vote on the two criteria.
Okay, I see. Well, I'll let you proceed however you need to at this point. I don't, I'm, I'm open to friendly amendments. I'm also open to withdrawing the motion. What would you like me to do?
Well, has the motion been seconded? I'm assuming, and you, okay, so you have a second? And that is to approve on basis of, on the two basis of criteria, one and three, I believe?
That's correct.
Okay, okay, so we have a second, so we can vote on that?
Okay. Do you want that by seat?
Well, I guess I'd like to offer, in the hope of getting us to a 4-1 vote, I'd like to offer a friendly amendment to amend Counselor Stavon Jordan's motion to say we are approving, we are modifying as to the fence and modifying as to, and approving only as to criteria
A point of order, only one criteria is required, correct? Okay, I'll accept the friendly amendment.
I'll second the friendly amendment.
Okay, so.
Can you restate the motion?
I don't know. I can try. I move to direct staff to prepare a final order to modify the decision of the planning commission to remove reference to the condition of approval regarding the fence and approve the variance requested by Kristina Federovski. God, this, I'm getting there. Don't worry. With a second modification to include only criteria number one. Is that acceptable, mayor?
Yep.
Okay. For an addition to the attached garage at the property located at 11932 Southeast 35th Avenue, land use application VR 2024-003 for council to consider on August 20th, 2024.
I second.
It has been moved and seconded to direct staff to prepare a final order to modify the planning commission decision by first removing the condition relating to the fence and second basing the variance finding only on criteria one or, and otherwise to approve the variance requested by Kristina Federovski for an addition to the attached garage at the property located at 11932 Southeast 35th Avenue, land use application VR 2024-003 for council to consider on August 20th, 2024. All those in, oh, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed, say no? The motion passes 4-1. This is not the final order, but once a final order is adopted, any party who's standing may appeal the decision of the city council to the state land use board of appeals according to the rules adopted by that board. If you have questions, please call the planning department staff. And as noted, we'll be back here on the 20th to adopt the final order. You got what you need?
Yep.
Okay. Okay. So we have council reports.
I don't think anyone has any.
Well, all right, we had a couple of holdover things we were going to discuss about ODOT, approaching ODOT. And I wanted Joseph here for that, actually. Sorry. And then I have metro, oh, metro rates, okay. Thank you. So the proposal, the issue was? The issue was the email we got from Mitri Dear Meyer about 224 intersection and approaching ODOT about slowing, you know, about improving the crossing times. And also, you know, there are intersections. I mean, I think she made a valid point in her email that we have some intersections in town where the pedestrians and bikes get an advance. I know that happens on Washington and McLaughlin, for example. That was something the city asked for at one point. Maybe it happens at all three lights on McLaughlin. That was something the city asked for at one point. You know, it does seem like there's a conversation to be had with ODOT. It's just kind of unusual for me to think of a counselor initiating that conversation as opposed to staff. So I guess I wanted to have that conversation as a group as to how something like that should be approached.
And I welcome you, Joseph will know more than me, but I think we recently, council recently sent a letter to ODOT discussing some speed concerns in 224. And in that case, I think the reason that staff recommended the letter come from council was just purely because we do have a good relationship with ODOT. We work with them frequently, but there is sort of, we hit a limit or a ceiling on sort of what we as from a staff-to-staff perspective might be able to achieve. So Joseph, I don't know if you would say the same kind of approach applies in this situation?
Yeah, that's a great summation. So I'm happy to ask my peers at ODOT if there's a conversation to be had that's greater than the one we're having tonight about those speeds and those times that you, it takes a pedestrian to cross. But in most cases, it's like not that big of an issue for them to address at this time. So sometimes, yes, putting up the flagpole and adding other voices to the-
So you're fine with?
I would be, I would be, I'm happy to start with me and we can go from there. I'm also happy to, at your leisure, try and see what kind of conversations you can have. I'd be fine with either.
I mean, I guess, you know, from your day job, you may know people at ODOT. And so maybe you have some inside track. It just struck me as a little, oh, yeah. It just struck me as a little odd that, you know, I mean, it's just not the way we've handled them before, I guess. And so I just wanted to have that conversation, but I mean, sounds-
I'll defer to you. Like if you would prefer to have this be a staff thing and then I can respond later, I was just happy to volunteer, so.
I'd also, sorry, Counselor Anderson, I would also suggest if you know some other folks that I perhaps don't know or are city engineer and don't know and that you'd have, you would want to connect us, that's also a great way to do it. And we can have those staff-to-staff conversations and see where they go. So, again, open to any and all.
Well, I mean-
And Devers here.
Maybe you guys should just discuss offline.
Well, yeah, that's fine. I'll make sure Joseph waits to the end when we cancel here and then I'll talk to him a little bit more.
I mean, also, I had written down, I had written down metro rates because we were talking about the issue with Metro's tipping fees and stuff. And that's another area where, you know, we happen to know somebody, we all happen to know somebody who's involved in Metro solid waste. But I don't know, I guess, yeah, anyway.
It's a gray area, right? You know, and I think we really will do, we will see, serve at the direction of council. What's interesting about this one is like Mitri's question was directed to council. And so we want to defer to how you would like to handle this. Let's talk offline, kind of figure out what feels right. But yeah, and I think when staff do say, hey, this might be better to come from electeds, it's usually just because of that extra oomph that sometimes it has coming from you. So I think same thing applies with the solid waste rates. We are very happy to take a crack at it and see where we can get at the staff level and move it up. But we also know that sometimes, you know, when things are asked of you directly as counselors, it's totally your prerogative as well to reach out.
Okay.
And I should say, I spoke with, in my check-in with Commissioner Lewis, I spoke with her about this. And she said the 14% was a one-time increase and that there won't be another 14%.
Look at the history.
Yeah, we need to, yeah.
So.
Yeah, that's probably a bigger conversation than to have at 10:30 at night. But I, I mean, there is, there is a history. I will say, there were, there were years, like 2015, 2016, where we didn't raise our garbage rates at all. There were a couple of years where we didn't raise them at all. So the raising we've been doing, and a lot of that is about Metro, is definitely, you know, significant. Anyway, I don't, yeah. If nobody else has any burning council reports they want to give, Counselor Seven George, anything out of C4 or anything?
Yeah, I have, I'm looking through, excuse me, looking through my notes for the C4 meeting. We had a presentation at the last meeting, which might be worth viewing if folks are interested. And I can send the link around to the meeting recording. So the presentation was from the team with the governor's office. The Housing and Homelessness Initiative's director was there. The Department of Land and Conservation, DLCD, regional representative for Clackamas and Multnomah Counties was there. And then the housing division manager was there as well. So they went through the Oregon Housing Needs Analysis, which, you know, in part, many of you are already, all of you should already be familiar with. But they were talking about, sorry, my brain. I will, I'll send all of these notes to council. They were talking about the legislative session. They talked about the standing up the Housing Accountability and Production Office, which is Hapo, I'm sure folks have already heard in part about this, modeled after similar offices in California. Standing up navigation centers, project turnkey sites around the state, changes that we talked a bit about, the state potential changes to, I think it was 3115 regarding time, place, and manner in light of the Grants Pass decision, Grants Pass decision. So I think that there's probably some more conversation that could be had there, but by then the meeting was going a little bit long. That's interesting, like another meeting. They talked about a revolving loan fund for housing production. And the way that they framed this, and I don't know, Joseph, if you're already familiar with this, but it was created in the last legislative session. So it's basically set up like TIP districts, but you can get a prepayment or, you know, like you don't have to wait for the TIP district to mature before you can start using those revenues. So I don't know the degree to which we've thought about that as a tool here in Milwaukee, but it also, it seems like something that could be pretty appealing to create more affordability within. Oh, you like what, like, are you picking up what I'm putting down?
Well, I actually just had a meeting with Habitat for Women.
Okay, awesome. I smell swim lane. They also talked about, stop it, we're just all getting punchy. They also talked about, oh goodness, okay, this is one thing that I will email, but the governor's office has a systems and process map as it pertains to all of the housing conversations and offices and how they're connected and how things are evolving. And if you want to just have a really fun night, you can dig through that flow chart and let me know how it goes. The other thing that I will mention because it is connected to the conversation we had previously about C4, we did discuss the values document that we talked about here. The document that I had emailed council with changes from other cities, there were no other modifications beyond that save the one that I mentioned in the work session, which is reference to, can't even remember now.
Paratransit.
Paratransit, thank you. So with the reference to transit systems, we added paratransit as a separate reference. And because sometimes it can get forgotten. And so we made sure that that was outlined separately. And so at this point, the next step is for councils to consider that document in its entirety, in its final form, and determine whether or not we want to add our logo to the document. And we can have that conversation throughout the month of August. And then the logos could be added by the end of this month. So what I'll do is I'll circulate the final modified, you know, final version. And then maybe in two weeks, we could reconsider adding the logo to that. And I know because, because my council updates are like a bedtime story for Councilor Matthew. Mention that because of the topics that came up in our meeting today around the stabilization center and the recovery center, I did make reference to a letter that the Clackamas County District Attorney's Office Advisory Panel is sending out. I want to ask the right way to handle this. I could copy council or blind copy council, maybe? Or do you want me to read it into the record? I guess, but what I want to, what I want to offer is if you are also interested in reaching out to the committee that's making decisions about deflection funding in the state of Oregon.
At 8:00 tomorrow?
They're meeting, well, they meet at 8:00 tomorrow morning. They also meet on Friday. So they're working their way through the rest of the counties. But our hope is that we'll be able to get enough, you know, ground swell of support that during the next two meetings, they'll reconsider their decision to deny Clackamas County's application. So I would, I would let, I would extend to you, you know, an ask to also send something to that committee. And I just want to check with Justin. I'm not sure the, I don't know the proper way to do this because it's a specific set of emails, you know, to send to the, to the committee.
I guess it's kind of unclear to me how you described it. They're asking for your support via an email?
So I sit on the district attorney's advisory panel. Our panel has put together a letter. That letter will be going to the committee that makes the decisions tonight so that they have it at least in their inboxes for tomorrow. What I would like to do is extend an ask to council that if you are also interested in advocating for the decision to be overturned about Clackamas County's deflection, that please do so. But because it's not just one email that it goes to, it's a whole committee that I'm sending it to, I want to make sure that, that I can get all those emails to all of council without serial deliberation. That's why I was asking about it here.
Well, but what you're asking is not for, is for us individually.
Yes, that's correct.
Not that we're trying to do it.
You just forward it to council and don't, nobody reply?
Okay.
And then you will need, you take it on your own initiative.
Okay.
Each, so then you've got five, I think I'm understanding it right.
Yeah, I think, I think you're piercing the delirium void.
I don't know if I'd go that far. Delirium and two deliriums doesn't make a-
Thank you. What you, what you could do when you get the letter is probably just like reply all or something. And then just say, you know, I support this letter, yeah.
So we're not changing, we're not paying our whole payment? We're just, that's an attachment and in the body of the email, we're just like, and that has to be done by one word?
It would be ideal, yeah. I'm sending it tonight. I'm going into the third shift.
The graveyard shift.
Okay, Counselor George out. I'm going to bed.
I got one.
You got one? Oh, okay.
I'm going to make you pay. So the watershed council met at Calog Creek last week. And so I think everyone saw the email about, you know, the craning, which is going to occur, you know, Thursday night, Friday morning. So the sediment sampling occurs in three locations. It occurs, you know, downstream from the railroad trestle, which is where they're, you know, going to crane in this week, and then in the impoundment area, and then in the upper reaches where they have to use that amphibious vehicle. So they still have not finished the impoundment area. So they're going to have to come back, you know, after that, you know, after the downstream sampling and everything like that to finish that, so.
So the crane's going to lift it over the, I mean, it's in the impoundment now.
Yeah, it has to come out.
And it's going to lift it over the railroad trestle?
No, no, no.
Between the railroad trestle and 9090?
It just gets taken out from where it is. And then taken on the road back down into the, into the-
Mouth of the creek.
Mouth of the creek, yeah.
Ah, darn, I thought they were going to lift it up.
So one, just, one of the more interesting things they found in the, in the sampling is in some sections of the impoundment, the sediment is three feet deep and in some sections is 40 feet deep, you know? So, you know, and when it comes up, it is, you know, when I, when you think about a sediment, you think about these things, you know, you see on the Discovery Channel or a Smithsonian, this nice, you know, long thing that they got it to. This is just coming out as slush, you know, that they're having to kind of get in segments and buckets and stuff like that. So it's kind of messy and that kind of thing. And so, you know, that's where we are.
Wow, wow.
And Councilor President Massey, do you have a sense of when they'll have a fiscal on the project? Or like?
A fiscal?
Like a total cost of how much the project will cost, or?
Oh, that's, I, I, that's, that's, I don't know, probably a year away at least.
Really?
I mean, they are, if you read the things that Neil sent us last week, they are using the $100 million figure. I thought they were not using that publicly, but they are.
Okay.
They don't, I mean, they're-
I'm not using it. You want to scare people off?
Yeah, I do think it's kind of a scary number, but it was, I don't know that we used that number, but there was a meeting with Merkley on, you know, Merkley had a town hall last Friday and Neil Schulman and I were there and, you know, Neil had given his staff some background and it does have that number on it. I was a little surprised, but I think that, what I've heard is like end of the year, early next year, we'll have a more firm number, but.
Okay, and I'm sure we'll talk about this next time we meet for the legislative stuff, so that's helpful.
Yeah, all right. Any other council reports? If not, I will enter, oh, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
My last motion of the evening, I move to adjourn.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None heard? We are adjourned.